Good morning. Good morning, if everyone could grab their seats, please. County Administrator wanted me to gavel, so here we go. We're going to call this meeting to order Tuesday, February 25th. Commencement of the meeting. We will now take a moment of silence, silent reflection, or silent prayer. Thank you very much. Supervisor Rickman, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Supervisor Guardia.
Here.
Supervisor Dolewal.
Here.
Supervisor Dean.
Here.
Supervisor Rickman.
Here.
And Chair Canepa.
Here.
Perfect. Now, we will go into recognitions and presentations. So, the Clerk of the Board, start our first one, which is Black History Month.
Thank you, Chair, that's correct. Our first proclamation is declaring February 2025 as Black History Month in San Joaquin County. And I would like to invite R.C. Thompson to the podium as we read this proclamation, which states, "Whereas the county of San Joaquin is proud to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas historical records show that African Americans have contributed to the history of San Joaquin County since its founding in 1849. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by civil rights advocate and historian Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the county of San Joaquin continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community, the state, and the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in San Joaquin County and encourages all citizens to unite in celebration of our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to build a just, inclusive, and prosperous community for all, presented this 25th day of February 2025." Chair Canepa?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming. So, it's 175-year anniversary of San Joaquin County. And we always say the term greatness grows here. Well, the way that African American people were brought to the county was to work the farms. And so, I, you know me, I always do a little bit of history and how we get there and how we've gotten here and what we're doing to fix it and make difference, differences in the world and how we do that as human beings to make it a better place to live. And then, I searched important people, and who popped up? Michael Tubbs. And it was, I was able to serve on Michael Tubbs at the Stockton City Council. And he reinvented South Stockton, UBI, Universal Basic Income, Stockton Scholars, and the word goes on and on and on. And these folks are here to continue that legacy of how do we change what we've done in the past? It might not be the most perfect past, but it is our history and it makes what America great. So, I think it's important that we do share those stories. We can erase the history. I mean, somehow, on the backs of certain people's labor and way that we discriminated and made their lives miserable, we can make it better by learning and figuring out how we could do random acts of kindness and just go out and learn and be a kinder human being. So, after that, I will bring it forward. And, R.C., you're going to be that next person when I search, search online, who has made a difference in San Joaquin County. And I think you are the perfect person to do that legacy. So, thank you for coming and sharing, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I have my elder here. Thank you so much. I forget to do that. Ms. Mary Nicholson, who serves our area of District Three in our French Camp area to support our Black families with heart disease. And her work is going forth. And she is also someone we hold dear. And so, I'm going to give the mic to her.
Thank you so much.
We're not going to judge, all right?
Thank you for recognizing Black history. I had this mint in it, it won't go away. That's when I'm talking. I'm talking about history in the making. A group started. Can I get some tissue or something to get this mint out of my mouth? I'm talking about history in the making. A group started just 38 years ago, in 1987, out of Compton. They called themselves NWA, a movement using powerful musical beats and rhyming lyrics to address issues of race, inequality, police violence, and other culturally relevant topics. Rap music chronicled the Black experience and spotlighted the bias, poverty, drugs, and survival perceptions in America. Throughout the 90s, rap music started dominating the airwaves. As rap became more popular, there became more resistance and an effort to criminalize the genre. With the introduction of videos, rap music became profitable for the record labels and, in fact, started dominating the airwaves. During this period, I was a media executive in Los Angeles. I saw and experienced the corporate resistance. Companies gave their advertising agencies mandates to not include radio stations that played rap, hip-hop, or urban music on their media buys. Today, the rap stations garner a large percentage of the ad dollars. Rap grew into a massive cultural and financial phenomenon, spawning millionaires and even billionaires. Entrepreneurs, fashion moguls, producers, actors, and business partners blossomed within the short window of time. Dr. Dre, one of the members of NWA, created and sold his headsets to Apple for $3 billion. We are watching history in the making. Less than 40 years, we have seen people like Jay-Z, Dr. Dre, 50 Cent, Snoop Dogg, and others rise from nothing despite resistance, bias, and so forth. There was no generational wealth. History in the making today, as rap artists and country artists collaborate and create award-winning songs. Dr. Dre, Jay-Z, Mary J. Blige, LLJ, and others have been inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. Snoop Dogg was a special correspondent for NBC TV at the 2024 Paris Olympics. And Snoop Dogg, Soulja Boy, and Rick Ross performed at the Presidential Pre-Inauguration Ball. Most recently, Pulitzer Prize winner rapper Kendrick Lamar was a sole entertainment for the 2025 Super Bowl halftime show. It was history in the making as the most-watched Super Bowl halftime show in the NFL's Super Bowl history. Black history is happening every day. It is American history. In spite of the resistance, American history shows up. We rise. Forty acres and a mule? This is not about the music. Done.
Thank you.
I want to thank Ms. Nicholson for that history. Thank you so much. And just remembering that we're all here dedicated as educators and curriculum creators within Zynga, with Faith in the Valley, with Pastor Curtis. We're here to serve our community and our county. And there's so much rich history that we have all in common in experiences of Black people here. And I want to thank you again for this proclamation.
Supervisor Rick, did you want to say a few words? Don't be bashful.
I am. I am Tiffany Herndon. I founded a grassroots nonprofit based on educational equity on behalf of Black scholars. And we're currently working on our Black Genius Declaration. So, I'm a Black educator. I went to teach history. My background was business, but I felt a call to action. Growing up in the Midwest, I saw firsthand the urgency that was needed to break down systemic barriers and also witnessed multiple inequities on behalf of Black scholars as I went through my educational journey. I was fortunate, as I was often deemed one that was exceptional to my race, articulate, brilliant, and was often urged to separate myself from the others. So, as I went on to be a history teacher, I felt that it was imperative for me to teach history because history is the foundation of the knowledge of self. And I believe for Black scholars and other communities of color that history is the most important subject that can be taught for us to liberate ourselves. And with that, thinking of February as Black History Month, we have MLK Day, also marking milestones of other great Black leaders, as well as important dates around Malcolm X, as well as Huey P. Newton. I say that today, I do not come to you with a dream. I do come to you with a call of action and to just do what's just and fair and to understand that Black history is American history. And to deny Black history is denying everyone their own history and is an integral part of human history. So, I thank you today for recognizing this proclamation. And I thank R.C. Thomas for having the courage and the vision to come forward to request this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. And first of all, I want to thank you all for this proclamation and recognizing Black history. I echo, you know, the words of my colleagues. I am Pastor Curtis Smith. I'm the Executive Director of Faith in the Valley, a multi-faith, multiracial, faith-based, community-organizing network, lifting up the power of the people to address the ills of our cities, of our counties, of our state. I stand here, you know, I did not coordinate with my dear sister, my elder, is that I stand here as a resident born and raised in the South, born in South Stockton to teenage parents. Was able to, fortunate to leave Stockton, with my father who joined the military, but returned to Stockton to University of the Pacific as an entertainment management major. And during that time, I had formed a group, R&amp;B, that actually was here in the first group we were able to open up for here in Stockton for an L.A. Day celebration that used to occur regularly, that's not here anymore, was NWA. They gave us opportunity, they gave us a chance, but they also taught us some things that we didn't know. And basically, you know, in that, I was one of those youth who were determined to leave this place called the Central Valley, called Stockton, California, in order to find other opportunities. But there were things that I saw on campuses of University of Pacific where I was told during my orientation, "Do not cross the south of Harding Way." Not knowing that I was born south of Harding Way, that all my family and friends lived south of Harding Way. And basically, the call, I should say, that I had on myself to leave this place turned into me taking a call into ministry and to return back in order to address the things that I experienced growing up here and to help the family members that didn't have the opportunities that I have. And so, I stand here today in recognition that it had not been for history, had it not been for elders, had it not been for an anonymous donor at the University of Pacific who knew I was the president of the AASU, the African American Student Union, to send me to the Junior Black Congressional Congress as a sophomore to learn more about who we are and how valuable we are and how important we are to this society. I wouldn't be standing here today, doing the work that I'm here today, coming back to this place to continue to address those things that still exist. So, I would just want to say, in our recognition, I pray that we're also able to continue to do the work together that basically says how important our Black communities are to our area. And I just want to leave with this, is that if you don't understand a purpose of a thing, abuse is inevitable. If you don't understand a purpose of anything, a person, a people, a community, a culture, abuse is inevitable. And so, if we work together to understand the purpose that we possess, I say why we're here, why we're created to do the things we do, why we fight so hard, we can stop some of the abuses that are happening. So, again, thank you for this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your testimonials. Very powerful. Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. And good morning, everyone. You know, thank you for being here. It's an honor to be here today as we celebrate Black History Month here in San Joaquin County, but all over the world. And this month is about remembering the past, but also about recognizing the present and shaping the future. You know, as you mentioned, Black history is world history. It's the story of resilience, courage, and excellence. So, thank you all for being here. You know, God bless you all.
Supervisor Dean.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. I was trying to figure out, Mary, how I could embarrass my son by sitting here acting like I know what I'm talking about, talking about rap music and watching him just curl up in a ball. What's that? Oh, he will. He's on his way to Seattle for a concert right now. So, that's why I'm going to, I'm going to leave that alone. I, Mary, I had no idea about your background. That's fascinating. And, you know, I love hearing those stories. I think one of the things that's important to remember is words have meaning. You know, with Martin Luther King, today, we're going to have two students that are going to read their essays. I hope you stick around and listen to them. And it's interesting how different generations can look and read the same words and how that resonates with them, both in a positive way, but in a different way. With Black History Month, we can't, we can't forget all the good that comes, as Mary pointed out, the successes as well. There was a congressman out of, is it South Carolina or North Carolina, James Clyburn, who actually wrote a cookbook, and it talks about Guinea-Gucci. Guinea-Gucci was the style of food that most of the slaves ate back then. And he started reading these recipes, and I just started laughing. And he goes, "What are you laughing about?" And I go, "You've just described," you know, it was, you know, the old meats and the flowers. I said, you know, "Every immigration group that came through, you know, in German, we called it fleischkikler." He called it Guinea-Gucci, you know. But we were able to connect over food to open up a completely different conversation that was much deeper. So, anyway, thank you for being here.
Vice Chair Dolewal.
Mr. Chairman, it's an honor to be part of this celebration. We are proud of our diversity. Black History Month is not only about the past, it's also about the future. We must continue to stand against injustice, uplift one another, and ensure that our next generation carries forward the legacy of strength and resilience. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you. Supervisor Guardia.
Thank you, Chair. I am one of the ones that grew up on rap music at Franklin High School, so. Franklin, Franklin High was a very, very diverse school, as we know. But this month highlights the opportunity to understand Black stories, uplift Black voices, and spotlight those who have made the difference in our culture and history. And I think as this month celebrates that, but we need to continue to educate ourselves and open ourselves up to new things, to things that we're not maybe comfortable with. But I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Perfect. If you can come down and take a photo, please.
Those individuals that didn't get a chance to get here on time, please come up. If I called you or emailed you, Ms. Hewood, it's Lakeisha Littleshaw here. Come on up for the picture. Amaya.
Second recognition is Start app, Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Chair. That is correct. Our next recognition is of the Greater Stockton Chamber of Commerce for their STAART Start Award. This is, I'd like to call up Tim Quinn with the Greater Stockton Chamber of Commerce to the podium as we read this recognition, which states, "This is presented to the Greater Stockton Chamber of Commerce in recognition of your selection as a recipient of the Outstanding Chamber Program Award for the innovative approach to combating retail theft through strategic partnerships and community-driven prevention efforts. Start has significantly contributed to strengthening the local economy by reducing theft and boosting consumer confidence, improving community safety through partnerships and crime prevention, and providing a model for other communities to replicate. The San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors extends its congratulations for this achievement presented this 25th day of February 2025." Chair Canepa?
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. It's a great day. Frank couldn't be here, but Frank's here with my lapel pin. He sent out these creepy eyes for everybody that knows. So, I thought I would grace his presence with him here in honor. So, thank you. We were there for, we went to lunch for the start of this. And I had, I gave my discretionary money to Start the app. So, there's tons of partners that are here doing great work. And I think it's amazing that everybody's on board. And now, folks are even wanting to duplicate it. So, that's why you guys are here, obviously, because you won a state award, correct? And that's why they're here. But also, other counties are reaching out, saying, "Hey, we want to duplicate this in our county." So, I think it's a testament to the work. I mean, obviously, DA Freitas is here and small businesses that are doing the camera app and everything. Anyway, I won't steal your thunder. Thank you for coming, and you have the floor.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman Canepa and Supervisors, for this recognition. On behalf of the Greater Stockton Chamber of Commerce and all our partner chambers in the county, I want to thank you for the recognition today of our community efforts in mitigating retail theft. The prestigious Best Chamber Program Award that we received at the Western Association of Chamber Executives that represents the eight western states and all the chambers there. It's just a recognition on our San Joaquin County, our community coming together to try and keep our businesses and employees safe from crooks, decreasing shrinkage, and optimizing sales tax for the county and its municipalities. Although we just started, that's a start pun for Frank. He couldn't be here today, but I had to get a pun in for Frank. Early indications is our Community Start program is serving as a model for other counties throughout the state with several indicating interest in onboarding the all-hands-on-deck approach to eradicating this epidemic that costs San Joaquin County and all residents in one way or another.
Thank you Chairman Canepa, Vice Chairman Dolewal, members of the board, County Minister Regalo. We congratulate the Greater Stockton Chamber on their Outstanding Chamber Program Award from the Western Association of Chamber Executives. As President Quimms said, this doesn't happen without a partnership, private, public, with the county and with all of us here today. This was truly a team effort. And boy, when the chamber first approached my office, we joined the effort wholeheartedly, citing the first MOU in our 175-year history, announcing that the district attorney's office is open for business and that crime is once again illegal in San Joaquin County. Working together with the chamber, we brought in not only law enforcement, but local businesses and retailers to help design a program that would be effective for both our ability to prosecute offenders and the ability of local businesses to stem the tide of retail theft that has plagued our county. This chamber-led initiative has already seen dividends. Prosecution of retail theft offenders in our community and reducing the retail crime that so often harms our small businesses is on the rise. We've promoted stronger partnerships between local businesses and law enforcement. We boost consumer confidence that retail theft will not go unpunished. And now with the passage of Prop 36 on December 18th of last year, I'm proud to say that paying is no longer optional in San Joaquin County and that your San Joaquin County District Attorney's Office has filed 33 felonies on serious business shoplifters and 22 felonies on serious drug offenders. So congratulations to the Stockton Chamber for an award well deserved. I look forward to our continued partnership into the future. And if I could just have one second more, I'd like to recognize some members of my office, that being Chief Deputy District Attorney Jeff Durman for his work with the chamber and the Business Council and Business Watch getting this done, and my Assistant District Attorney Rick Price, who makes all things happen. So thank you Chamber and thank you Board for this opportunity to recognize the chamber.
Thank you.
Everyone, my name is Blake Smalley. I'm with Cowd Ed Services. We were selected as one of the camera installers for the Start program and I just wanted to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce, the District Attorney's Office for really their support in this action. Funny story, not funny, actually terrible story. One day I was at CVS buying my grandma something and it was on March Lane, Quill Lakes, nice shopping center, and someone walks in, loads a bag full of stuff up, and I'm at the counter getting ready to pay and this person just walks out. And I look at the person at the register and I'm like, are you guys gonna do anything about that? And they're like, no, it's the fifth time today, we're not gonna do anything about it. She was like, if you want to take what you have right now and go, you can go. And I was just like, oh my gosh, like this is terrible. This was obviously prior to everything that's been established. And so when we got reached out to and heard the initiative from the Chamber of Commerce and the District Attorney's Office to be involved, we definitely wanted to be involved. And yeah, we're happy to be installing these camera systems through the grants that's provided and really happy to see the initiative and the action being taken from our county because it takes all of us together to stop such a terrible thing. And it's really cool to see the action. We're happy to be a part of it. So thank you for all you guys do and thanks for the support.
Thank you.
How's everyone doing? My name is Rozzy. I am the owner of Revamp Signs and Designs. I am also a small business owner in Stockton, California. And as someone who works directly with the small businesses of Stockton, I've seen what retail theft has done. It has replenished a lot of the resources, income that small businesses have. So this is an amazing project. Frank and the whole team at the chambers have done an amazing job at getting the word out. And I mean, helping people preventative stages are better than what do you do after they steal from you? So thank you guys.
Thank you. But I mean, there's, there's tons of upside. Go ahead, no, go ahead, because I just was ready to talk about the upside of the app, that you could do other crime-stopping events that are, go ahead.
Yep. Thank you. Johnny Argüés, Division Director for San Joaquin County Office of Education, CodeStack Division. Yeah, so this, this was a, a great project for us. You know, this is not the first kind of community project that we've done. We did a homeless survey encampment app with, with San Joaquin, I forgot, I forgot what organizations, there was a bunch, it was, it was a collaboration. But yeah, and, and this definitely won't be our last. We have an incredible team that if you can dream it, we could build it kind of mentality. So we're glad to leverage that for the community and as being part of the community and, you know, leveraging our resources to help, you know, home, that's always something that we have a deep passion for. So glad to be part of this and work with all the partners involved and looking forward to expanding it.
Perfect. Thank you. Supervisor Guardia.
I want to congratulate the chamber and your team on, on a well-built system. Obviously, anything brand new is, is always gonna have its challenges and honestly looking forward to how we can expand it to our legal dumping, because I, I believe that you have already proven that we can curb the theft and, you know, everybody in this community knows it's really hard to have or start a business in this community. So anything that can help, but I appreciate for all the, all the hard work you have done.
Vice Chair Dolewal.
Thank you Sir. Greater Stockton Chamber of Commerce, thank you for your work in supporting this program. Programs like this help our local businesses to protect themselves and reduce crime. Thank you once again. And Mr. Freitas, thank you Sir. Thank you for everything you and your department does. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Dean.
No, thank you for everything you've done and you've put into action what a lot of people stand around and talk about. So you actually did it. So congratulations to you, the District Attorney's Office, who is back in work again. Thank you.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you Chairman. Mr. Quinn, you and your team, Frank, thank you for the job and congra- congratulations. And, you know, people don't realize, I think, that how much work that went into this and, you know, outside of the city of Stockton, I mean, you talked to all the different chambers here in San Joaquin County, you talked to and worked with all of our different eight, you know, eight cities here in San Joaquin County and the county itself, our allied agencies, our sheriff's department, our DA's office, the list goes on and on and on. But, you know, especially for our small businesses that were just getting punished pretty much by, you know, retail theft, camera grant and, you know, helped a lot of those small businesses be able to identify who's doing this and going to our DA's office and seeking prosecution. Billboards, those of you that drive around here in San Joaquin County, there'll be billboards everywhere pretty much telling everybody that enters San Joaquin County that, you know, you commit retail theft, you commit a crime here, we're coming after you. We have the law enforcement side and we have the prosecution side. It makes a big deal. And, you know, a lot of it, when we were doing this, is the attention when, during the election of the Prop 36. And you see the overwhelming how it passed. I mean, it's not just a San Joaquin thing, it's an entire state of California. People are tired of people being able to commit crime with, without accountability. And it's nice to have that accountability here in San Joaquin County. And I've said it, you know, many, many of times, that this board takes public safety very, very seriously. And it's, you know, one of our essential jobs as elected officials is to take care of our residents and how we do it as policymakers, of course, making policy, but is with funding. So again, thank you all and God bless you all. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Christina was here, I don't know where she went, but she's had a lot to, oh, here she is. You need to be up here, so you've been helping. Frank, if you all don't know, is an overachiever and Frank sends out more videos and I, I think I got three videos over the weekend, and now he's done a meme or some little cartoon character that he sends out. But I mean, it's amazing, the passion, and I think that's what it starts with, is the passion and the community and everybody wanting to do something but not knowing how to do something. And this is one way that we get it done. So thank you guys and if you can come down and take a photo, I appreciate it.
Thank you Chair. Next is a presentation requested by Supervisor Dean of the 4th Supervisory District during Black History Month of two Martin Luther King Jr. Breakthrough Project essay contest winners, Vince Sinaglia and Kanon Taha, who I would like to invite to the podium. And through the chair at this time, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Dean.
Thank you very much. I want you two come on up. So the, the Breakthrough Project does an essay contest every year. The Breakthrough Project was established, what year was that? 1998, there was a cross burning that took place on, on Toque High's campus. And so in response to that, the Breakthrough Project does an essay contest, talk about bigotry, oppression, and different things. And, and like you heard me say earlier during, when we were talking about Black History Month, you know, words can be joyful, they can be hurtful, they can be poetic, but they can be interpreted differently by all individuals. And when, when I heard these two read their essays and what Martin Luther King's words meant to them, I, I thought it was really inspiring. The, the project this year is based on Martin Luther King's quote, "We must accept finite disappointment, but never lose infinite hope." So you don't need to hear from me anymore. Let's, let's get to the magic here. Let's start with Vince.
Have you ever faced a challenge, a challenge so big that your heart was left in a million pieces? Martin Luther King Jr. had a lot of challenges and so has my family. My setback was when my dad was diagnosed with stage 3 cancer called high-grade neuroendocrine carcinoma and died five months later. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "We must accept finite disappointment, but never lose infinite hope." I have learned a lot of lessons through this tragedy and I never lost hope in the end, just like Martin Luther King Jr. had once done. On April 12th, 2023, my healthy, strong, and young dad was diagnosed with a very rare and aggressive form of cancer. He passed five months later. It was very difficult to watch my dad suffer for five months and see how the cancer destroyed him. It is still difficult because I have to live every day without him. While my dad battled cancer for five months, the one thing that I never gave up on and he never gave up on was hope. This made me very sad because my dad was very special to me and very involved in my life. I learned that life is truly short and we never know when it's our time to go. The one thing that I learned from my dad was to never give up hope. This challenge, this challenge changed me to live more like my dad. I choose every day to make good choices and treat everyone with respect like my dad once did. For five months, I watched my dad in horrible pain, but he still walked me to school, watched my baseball games, and loved me. This showed me his hope was so strong, so strong that he never gave up, even though he was miserable. During difficult times, life can turn very dark. Having hope gives you the wish to look forward to good things to come in your life. As my dad would say during his battles, "If you don't have hope, you have a big fat goose egg." Hope gives individuals something to look forward to. If you continue to focus on the negative and not aim for the better, it is easy to get stuck and not overcome tough times. Martin Luther King Jr. quote, quote states that we have to accept disappointment, but not lose hope. In my situation, I have to accept the torture of my dad being gone, but I have to have hope that I will be with him one day. Hope helps me every day because I look forward to seeing and hugging my dad one day. I refuse to believe that day will never come. My life was destroyed when my dad died. During his battle, I watched him fight and hold on to hope, even during very hard days. This situation has taught me the meaning of hope, even though my heart is still broken. I feel like my dad said it the best, "If you don't have hope, you have a big fat goose egg." My wish is for you to learn from Martin Luther King Jr.'s quote in my situation. My heart is still in a million pieces, but I still hold on to hope, just like my dad once did.
Vince?
I was nervous when I first found out that I was accepted into Elkhorn Elementary School. I had heard it was a challenging school for gay students and there would be lots of work, assignments, and projects. There would also be kids I didn't know in a new environment, making me even more nervous. I was anxious and stressed out. It was a significant change for me, but I got used to it quickly with my teachers' help and family's support. I still face many challenges, but I try my best daily. Last year, at the beginning of 5th grade, things started to change for me. Palestinians in my home country who had always lived in poverty with no freedom were being starved, murdered in huge numbers and tortured. This has happened for at least 70 years, but this time was different because I could read, watch, and see all these things live. They knew spoke every day about it, and even though my parents didn't want me to see certain things, I couldn't run from it. I learned more about my Palestinian family through a family history project in 5th grade, around the same time as the beginning of the genocide in Gaza. I was sad to understand everything my family had already been through. I began to realize that no matter how hard I thought, I was at least safely allowed to go to school every day. Palestinian children living in the West Bank and Gaza Strip have probably never felt this way. Since a lot of people were unfamiliar with what was happening in Gaza, I would do my best to be the representative of a Palestinian kid wherever I went. Even though we go through many hardships, the best thing about Palestinians, Palestinians is that even though we're going through the worst possible things, we continue to hold on to hope. We want peace for the future, but we want to have it with freedom and dignity. This is like what MLK Jr. meant about never losing hope, even when things look hopeless. It's clear to me that the words of MLK Jr. can also be used to describe what the Palestinians continue to go through. We show strength and hope as we fight for our fundamental human rights. We will never give up. The words of MLK Jr. mean that holding on to hope to overcome difficulties is the only way that we could work towards our goal of having our own civil rights and living a better future. I understand why and how these words helped us continue in the civil rights movement, even when it seemed like they would never reach their goal. They were able to accomplish what may have seemed impossible. We will never stop having hope to live in peace, justice, and dignity.
We will never stop having hope to live in peace, justice, and dignity.
Can I get both of you up and the parents and... Oh, I'm sorry. Give me about three more years, and I'll figure out how to do my job. Supervisor Rickman?
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. Excellent job by both of you. I mean, words are so powerful. And looking at your speeches and hearing your speech today, hearing the inspiration, the strength, you know, the truth, and the pain, but most importantly, the hope. I mean, it's awesome to be up here and looking down and listening to you two and thinking about the future, a future not just San Joaquin County, but of not just the state or this country, but the world with individuals like you. And you are our future leaders, you know? Listening to you here today, I can tell you're not just leaders in your school, but as you get older, you're going to be leaders in this community. And hopefully someday, I mean, hey, you'll be up here on this dais and, you know, giving people what they need to hear. So congratulations, and God bless both of you.
Thank you, sir. Amazing young men. Thank you so much. These words are so powerful. Please do not stop. Continue speaking the truth. You know, with words like yours, you can definitely change the world. And I'm so glad that our future is bright. Thank you.
Your essays were very touching. I wrote them in my office. It's very, very touching. I saw some tears flowing out there in the crowd. And it reminded me to call my dad and tell him I love him. And honestly, you guys give us hope because, you know, every generation thinks the next generation is going to be a little worse off. And I'm honored to have read your essays and really, really excited for our young children to become our future leaders. But a very, very good job, and I'm proud of you guys.
Chairman Kanaba?
Well, if that doesn't warm your heart, I don't know you've got a bad heart or something. So that's just absolutely amazing. Thank you, guys, for coming and sharing. I know it's not easy to come and be in front of all of us, and you did an amazing job, and I'm proud of you, and you're not even my kids. So with that, I think is... I'll let... Thank you for bringing this, because we are celebrating. I mean, one of my goals this year was to celebrate youth, and if this isn't a celebration of youth, I don't know what is, so.
If I could get the parents and family friends down here for a photo, or whoever They're probably tired of... They keep reaching out their hand to shake my hand, and I keep giving them a hug, and they're... They're probably going to go home and go, "Who is that creepy dude that kept tugging us?" But I... Ready? Go.
Ready? Hey, guys.
Thank you.
[applause]
If you address the board in person, there is a time limit of three minutes for these comments. There is a device on the podium with a green, yellow, and red light. The yellow light will come on 30 seconds before the end of the three minutes. With regard to public comment, the law strictly limits the ability of board members to discuss matters not on the agenda, so this is not an appropriate time to have a discussion with the board regarding your comments. We ask that you refrain from personal attacks during your comments and that you address all comments to the board of supervisors, not to the audience. Comments from the public may not reflect the view of the board. So at this time, Anthony Robinson's got to go pay his meter, so come on up. Oh, you're right, okay. Come on up, sir. No, I was just saying that you got to go first.
My name is Anthony Robinson. This is the third time I'm going to address this board. I'm going to give you a little black history, my black history. First time I addressed this board was in June of 1997 in response to a department's head saying that they could not find qualified African-Americans for any of their positions. The second time I addressed this board was in response to, I had showed in 2003 that your employees engaged in ritualistic degradation of African-Americans in the workplace through emails and jokes and inappropriate behavior. The last time I addressed this board was in 2011 or 2012. I had been chosen after 13 years to be terminated. How that came about? I went to court about that. I lost, but it didn't kill me, and I still need a job. That's why I'm back. This is a job interview for me. It's the business intelligence analyst position that you have. The criteria says that the appropriate person will be able to develop business strategies. Me, myself, I have a bachelor's degree from University of Pacific in business development, business organizational development. It's right down my line alley, but I was denied the opportunity to compete for that position. I think it's because it's the practices and patterns of behavior that engages with your HR department. So this is twofold, the job interview, and then California law requires that you give notice to any municipality that you're about to sue. This is my attempt to give that notice to meet that legal requirement. I ain't got time to be wasting around like I did with your previous predecessors. They all claim to be the same thing, individuals who cared about the community, cared about black people, cared about diversity. In the end, it's all about preferential treatment to certain people. And African-Americans, especially African-American men, do not have an opportunity to compete or obtain positions of authority in this organization or this county. So that's my purpose for today. I'm sorry, the last time I was here was five minutes, and I had a prepared, a good wow statement that I thought would be very comprehensive, but three minutes and other things happened. So I hope that's clear. Two things: I want that job. If I don't hear from you by Friday, then I don't have that job. I'll proceed with the legal proceedings, and you now have notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tracy Glaze, please. And after Tracy is Carla Huni.
Tracy Glaze, San Joaquin Delta Neighborhood Watch. I wanted to speak in regards to the smoke shops. I need to speak now because I have a 11:30 meeting with Fish and Wildlife Federal for our golden muscles. So can I speak now for it? Thank you. So within a four-block radius, not radius, within four blocks on Country Club, we have three smoke shops. And my concern is neighborhood decline. When we start bringing in, allow three smoke shops within four blocks, we have loitering, we've got other, the negative effects to all of the other businesses where they're utilizing all the parking spots. If we don't protect our communities from neighborhood decline, we're going to have lost revenue on property tax. Those homes are going to sell for less, 10% to 20% on neighborhood decline on the value of your home. Where are we going to recover that revenue? So if moving... And it's not just smoke shops. We need to look at it, the big picture of quality of life, safety, labor enforcement for our enforcement, where they're going to have to concentrate into those areas. And also with the county and our little inner pockets within city proper. If the city goes to look and do a search on areas, smoke shops within an area that includes county proper, they have to be classified as smoke shops. And so we don't have, literally across the street in the city, we have a smoke shop. We walk across Mission, and now we have another smoke shop. So I appreciate you guys looking at this, and I just have concerns on regards to especially Country Club. Thank you.
Thank you. That item will be coming up on a possible moratorium on smoke shops in county pockets and discussion items. Carla Huni. And after Carla, Karen Campbell, please, is on deck.
Good morning, Chairman Kanaba and the board. I'm Carla Huni, and I'm here, a citizen of San Joaquin County. So I wanted to thank you... Oh, my gosh, you guys, I'm thanking you for something, for approving the recommendations from the Election Advisory Committee to send letters to Gavin Newsom and to President Trump regarding that our county would like to have voter ID and also to have the election be able to be counted faster, just to do away with same-day registration. And that's a good start. We need to go further. So the board has been having discussions about state-mandating programs that are not funded by the state, they're funded by the county, and you all need to be taking a look at that. So if you go backwards in time when COVID started and we had the emergency, we put in drop boxes and vote by mail to mitigate anybody catching COVID, for whatever that We were under emergency longer than any other state. Those drop boxes and vote by mail are still in place. They don't need to be. They need to go away. You look at the amount of time that the ROV office spends sending out the ballots and your costs, sending out the ballots, mailing, having to do signature verification, had a pickup at the drop boxes. They did 22 pickups this year, or this, as the general election was less than before, but still the amount of time. So I would like us, and besides that, there's already a program in place that's been in place for very many years. If you cannot go vote, or if you're going to be out of the area, there's the absentee program. And you can do that with cause, you can sign up for that. I used to do that because I'd be overseas every time there was an election. And then for the military, there's deployed military people that have the CAVA program, which they mail all their military ballots to them. So we don't need the vote by mail. The other thing with vote by mail, once the ROV or the printer mails out those ballots, there's no chain of custody. You have no idea who they're going to. Yes, they're supposed to go to that address, it doesn't mean they do. And when you're mailing it back, it's the same. So you have no idea who filled out that ballot. I don't care what the signature looks like. So what I'd like to see us do is work together to get these programs taken away by the state. And this is the best time to do it. There's things on the pike right now that are coming down, but I think we can push maybe the legislature and the governor of this state to do away with those. So then we have money to actually have a real election that you vote in person, go to your polling place, and have it counted. So just one other thing, Germany had an election this weekend. It was 47 million voters. They counted it in eight hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Campbell and Michael Hawkins is on deck.
Good morning, board members. My name is Karen Campbell, and I have been a nurse at San Joaquin General Hospital for almost eight years. I sit on the Professional Performance Committee. I serve as a nurse representative, and I am a member of your CNA bargaining team. And here we are again, after nearly 12 months of negotiations, 21 sessions, petitions, prior speak-outs during open comment period here at the board, a staffing picket, two unfair labor practices filed with the Public Employee Relations Board, a one-day unfair labor practice strike mediation, and now we have reached impasse. The county has made several unilateral changes to longstanding language and side letters, disparately gave wage increases to a few while leaving the long-term, seasoned, and skilled nurses who are training your new nurses and who carried this community through the worst pandemic we've ever seen, leaving those nurses out of the wage increases. Now, the county has unilaterally implemented a change to a side letter that has been in place for 22 years. This change will drastically impact the county's ability to staff the hospital and only serves to negatively impact the daily lives of more than half of our nursing workforce, which will in turn drive them away. We can honestly say that this is the worst we have ever seen the county behave in negotiations. We are here today to tell you that we will not stand for takeaways that threaten safe staffing levels and put our patients and our licenses at risk. We will not stand for nurses being treated disparately or left out of increases. We will continue to fight for what is right and for what will ensure that this county can continue to recruit and retain experienced nurses. We are here to tell you that this fight that you are forcing us into through the poison pill takeaways, unilateral changes, and insistence on unsafe staffing practices is going to get a lot louder and more uncomfortable for the county. Today, we are issuing a written strike notice to you, delivered through the clerk and to HR Director Jennifer Goodman. The CNA nurses of San Joaquin County did not want it to come to this, but the board has left us no choice. We cannot accept the county's takeaways and continued rejection of our proposals on discrimination protections, nurse health and safety, workplace violence protections, and protections against infectious diseases. The CNA nurse bargaining team remains open and willing to discuss a fair resolution to this contract that addresses our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hawkins and Glennell Bowen is next, please.
more uncomfortable for the county. Today, we are issuing a written strike notice to you, delivered through the clerk and to HR Director Jennifer Goodman. The CNA nurses of San Joaquin County did not want it to come to this, but the board has left us no choice. We cannot accept the county's takeaways and continued rejection of our proposals on discrimination protections, nurse health and safety, workplace violence protections, and protections against infectious diseases. The CNA Nurse Bargaining Team remains open and willing to discuss a fair resolution to this contract that addresses our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hawkins. And Glennel, Glennel Bowen is next, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Hawkins. I'm a registered nurse. I'm a former registered nurse of San Joaquin General Hospital. I came to this board on January 28th to ask permission to start an American Association of Critical Care Nurses Healthy Work Environment Initiative, to buy three to five computers for my unit to see and to investigate a feasibility study for additional revenue streams for our unit. That evening, I received email from my manager about my presence here. Over the next two days, I received harassing emails and text messages from my manager and the Deputy Director Zainab Wardak. I was mandated to have a meeting on Friday, the 31st, that consisted of my manager, a CNA representative, which was an administrator, and Zainab on the telephone. I was not allowed to leave the hospital or get my own representation for this meeting. In this meeting, I was accused of doing things that I did not do. I was presented with patient records that were incomplete. And in my description of the incomplete patient records, I tried to explain that patient data often disappears within our computer system. I've had this conversation with Ms. Wardak going back to August and September of last year. We have corrupt patient data systems. You can chart something, it will disappear. You have patient data that merges into another patient's record. You can document something and before you have time to save it, it disappears. So I was attempted to be disciplined on a known system problem. I spoke with Mrs. Brandy Hopkins and she scheduled a meeting with CEO Castro and I. That meeting was February 12th. In that meeting with Mr. Castro, I outlined other things that we had problems with within the organization such as administrators, changing time cards, denying overtime without question, nurses being afraid to speak up and speak out on various concerns because they were afraid of retaliation. Other concerns were patient safety issues. We have tuberculosis patients on open floors and multi-patient rooms with visitors and families, and we're still ruling out tuberculosis and the system is not protected. No one is notified of these issues. We have issues of hospital policy violations, patients being restrained, double wrist restraints, double ankle restraints, and this conversation with Mr. Castro and Ms. Hopkins. I was released from my position two days later as a probationary staff member of San Joaquin General Hospital. I was told I did not meet unit criteria. I would like this board to consider other alternative. Thank you.
Glennel Bowman, please, and Melinda Mason is next.
Thank you. My name's Glennel. I'm from San Joaquin County and I would like to read a letter to you written by the Honorable Robert Paul Preston, Governor Pro Tempore of Provisional Government of New California State. This letter is to Donald J. Trump, President of the United States, and it reads, Dear Mr. President, my name is Paul Preston. I am founder of the New California State Movement and elected Governor Pro Tempore of New California State by the reorganized government of California formed following the West Virginia model. The New California State Movement began in response to the unconstitutional and dictatorial actions of the existing state of California and its governor. The current California government, in violation of the United States Constitution, Article Four, Section Four, does not have a republican form of government, nor has it protected its citizens from invasion nor from domestic violence. For the reasons set forth below, we are asking for your personal intervention and the intervention of the federal government to invoke the Insurrection Act of 1807, for the reasons set forth below, to invoke the Emergency Economic Powers Act, to declare the Mexican cartels terrorists and seize their assets, and to recognize New California State and request Congress grant their statehood resolution. Background: The New California State Movement formed in response to the arbitrary and dictatorial actions of the governor of the existing state of California declared its independence from the existing state of California on September 15th, 2018. Since then, we have published 190 public grievances as our nation's founding fathers published in their Declaration of Independence, held 12 constitutional conventions, established three branches of government, including a bicameral legislature, and drafted a constitution closely akin to the 1850 California Constitution. Our legislature has passed 40 resolutions in an effort to thwart further Mexican cartel and communist Chinese efforts to make California a totalitarian state. The New California State Movement has closely followed the procedure that West Virginia followed to achieve statehood during the American Civil War. Today's constitutional crisis, financial. The existing state of California is in economic freefall and is illegally funding its budget deficits by misapplying grant monies received from federal trust accounts. For the last several years, old California has failed to publish a comprehensive annual financial report as required by California law because the state administration has borrowed federal grant money to fund state budget deficits. Thank you.
Thank you. Glennel, so Melinda Mason. Stephen Trout is next.
Okay, continuing. The nonpartisan Legislative Analyst Office, thank you, has declared the state of California has an $85 billion deficit. On January 1st, 2025, California State Auditor Grant Parks issued a qualified opinion in the Internal Control and Compliance Audit Report for the financial year ending in June 30th, 2024. This qualified opinion means that the state issued financial statements cannot be relied upon as a true and correct accounting of the state's income, spending, and balance sheet. California is the only state in the union with such a qualified opinion. The auditor is also unable to certify that the $46 billion estimate for the Employment Development Department fraudulent payments that need to be recovered reflects 100% of the state's obligation to the federal government. In addition, the outmigration of California to other states, exaggerated by the recent and well-publicized mismanagement of Los Angeles fires, will result in a $6 billion tax shortfall. A recent research article by the Mountain Top Times estimated the outmigration of wealthy millennials will result in the loss of a $17.7 billion taxes over the next three years. Invasion. The existing state of California is not free from invasion as guaranteed by Article Four, Section Four of the United States Constitution. Because California opened up its borders and declared itself a sanctuary state, this open border has three, has three, the entry of, has, I don't know, that must be a misprint, but it has detrimental results of three. It follows, unvetted illegal aliens to invade the state. Two, it allows the entry of illegal drugs into the state. These drugs flow from other states and kill thousands of American citizens. Three, the open border has created a multibillion human trafficking industry.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Trout.
Yep, three minutes, sir.
Hello. Continuing on with the same letter written to President Donald Trump. New California State provides the solution. The existing state of California cannot fix itself because the same politicians that crammed California into its current unconstitutional mess would be the same politicians who would try to resolve the problems they caused. The solution is New California State, which would unburden the majority of the California landmass and provide the existing state of California with an income stream that would resolve the existential budget shortfall that is now plain to all. The New California State Movement is the vehicle to resolve existing California's existential financial crisis. Our movement is authorized by the New States Clause of Article Four, Section Three of the United States Constitution, because New California is closely following the model of West Virginia when it separated itself from Virginia during the American Civil War. Just as the Commonwealth of Virginia seceded from the Union in 1861, so the current state of California has seceded from the Union by its wholesale violation of the guarantees of Article Four, Section Four of the United States Constitution, and by instituting a monoparty dictatorial government similar to the governments of North Korea, Communist China, and Cuba. You provide the answer the people of California need. Mr. President, only you can provide the help the people of California desperately need. If you, A, invoke the Insurrection Act of 1807 by recognizing the current state of California currently exists in a state of rebellion and default thereby enabling the deployment of troops to close the southern border and to protect the citizens from domestic violence. B, invoking the Emergency Economic Powers Act. C, to seize cartel assets wherever they may be found and declare the cartels as terrorists. And D, introducing to Congress the great new California State and urging Congress to pass the great new California Statehood Act to be submitted to Congress after your inauguration. Respectfully, Robert Paul Preston, Governor Pro Tempore of the great state of New California.
Thank you. Robin Bowles and Erica Peña is on deck, please.
Thank you very much. I came here to address a safety hazard. I live on 12th Street. It is a dead end road. The only way to get out of the road is, well, it's, on Sundays and on special occasions, St. Lance Church that's in front of the road will have people park in areas where it says, and it's designated, no parking. You previous, the previous administration here, pre-pandemic, was successful in putting signs saying, no parking. No one pays attention to it whatsoever. So whenever I need to make a left-hand turn off my road, I virtually have to pull out in the middle of the lane with my car almost in direct line of incoming traffic. So I run the risk of being T-bone. I cannot see to my left because of the vehicles that's in areas where it says no parking, it's still parking there. I made several, at least, at least a couple of dozen attempts with CHP to come there and ticket these vehicles. No results. And I call almost constantly, every Sunday and when they have events, parking vehicles there. It's a visual hazard. I can't get off the road without the risk of getting nailed. I would, I would appreciate if it's possible that you guys could put rubber bumpers or something on the corners to prevent these vehicles from parking in these areas since they obviously are not paying attention to these no parking signs, such as the rubber bumpers that's on Benjamin Holt around the corners near these, over by, on the corners where they're preventing vehicles to getting too close to the corners. So for, it's there to protect pedestrians. I would appreciate if you guys could maybe put the rubber bumpers over there and maybe enforce these rules of no parking. They have never paid attention to it. And there's actually no parking in front of the church itself. Never pays attention to it whatsoever. I would appreciate you being able to fix the problem. We've had, one time we've had, and this has happened a couple decades ago, we had a mailman trying to make a left-hand turn from the, from the area, same situation. He was on T-bone. He was actually T-bone because of the visual impairment. It is a safety hazard. There is no way off that road except the way you come in. I would appreciate you seeing if there's any possible way to address this. It's a major safety hazard. I would, if you guys could just, you previous, the previous people that was here before, they made an attempt, it failed. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. What supervisory district do you reside in?
I have no idea. The fact was.
Twelve, huh?
Through the chair, it is the first supervisory district.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have Supervisor Guardia look into this.
I would appreciate it because I tell you, right now as it stands, it is a major safety hazard.
Okay.
I cannot get off that road without putting my vehicle out in the middle of the thing to make a left-hand turn and I run the risk of getting T-boned every time.
And it looks like Public Works Director might be back there willing to, and Edith Villopudo, who works with Guardia's office, is in the back there. So they're looking like they're willing to talk to you. So thank you for your comments, sir.
Erica Peña, please.
Good morning Board. My name is Erica and I've been an IHSS worker in San Joaquin for one year and a proud member of SEIU 2015. I speak on behalf of more than 8,000 IHSS workers in San Joaquin with stories and financial struggles just like mine. I currently provide care for my grandmother who needs 24-hour care due to dementia. I love the work I get to do every day and today I'm here to tell you why IHSS workers like me urgently need a wage increase in our next union contract. In June of 2024, my grandmother and I were evicted from our home. I had just transitioned out of my former career as a plumber into my current role as my grandmother's full-time caregiver before struggling to pay our rent. For six months, we were staying with family while waiting for the next available affordable housing unit in Stockton. Finding a safe and secure home for me and my grandmother is essential to providing her the high-quality, long-term care she needs and deserves. But in order to afford rent or a mortgage in San Joaquin, IHSS workers need a higher, more livable wage. I urge you to please pass a strong union contract with higher wages for IHSS workers. The health and safety of San Joaquin's older adults, people with disabilities, and long-term care workers, nearly 18,000 community members depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Omar Guerrero.
Good morning, community members, as well as the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors. My name's Omar Guerrero and I stand up here first and foremost to thank the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming February as Black History Month and standing in solidarity with our Black brothers and sisters within the community, as well as extend a massive thank you to the organizations that helped push that proclamation through and thank them for their resilience and their dedication to the community. And want them, I want them to know personally that they have an impact on all San Joaquin County residents, including myself. And hopefully they know, our Black community members know, that you not only have allies within the Latinx community, but you have accomplices that are willing to fight for your civil rights as well. That being said, Black history is, is an integral part of American history and should be an integral part of the state curriculum within single subject and multi-subject curriculums here in the state. And you all, as the Board of Supervisors, should strongly support any initiative that is uplifting any critical race or ethnic studies teaching because every single Black, Brown, and Indigenous youth member deserves to know their history and history that is not whitewashed by oppressors or by people that have no interest in truly being, being true to what our community needs. That being said, we are no longer a minority in this country and no one is illegal, a criminal, or an invader on stolen land. And I also stand here, up here today because I am asking San Joaquin County, our community members here, as well as the Board of Supervisors, to serve as allies and accomplices with the Latinx community and the attacks that we are currently facing through the executive orders by Donald J. Trump. And you all could do that. You all could stand with our community by proclaiming San Joaquin County as a sanctuary. as a sanctuary county, much like many other counties have, and in accordance with state law. And since our board earlier stated that you all are really focused on the public safety of all residents, and you all previously stated that you are a board that does not focus on hearsay, I have brought some statistics for you to make sure that you understand the impact and the necessity of proclaiming this. So according to USC Doran's Life, the immigrant population in San Joaquin County is about one hundred and fifty-six thousand. According to the Migration Policy Institute, there are fifty-five thousand undocumented people in SJC, and this represents about ten percent of the population. And according to the US, the United States Census Bureau, twenty-four percent of San Joaquin County residents are considered foreign-born persons. So if you refuse to proclaim San Joaquin County as a sanctuary city, then you are choosing to be complicit in the face of oppression while your neighbors and constituents are having their civil rights taken away. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Omar. At this time, I have no more requests for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak that didn't fill out a card? Going once? Going twice? If you could, please state your name in three minutes.
My name is Aurelia Walker.
Thank you.
My name is Aurelia Walker again. I've been an IHS caregiver for my grandson since twenty nineteen. I'm also a proud member of SEIU twenty fifteen and the founder of Mike's Playground, a nonprofit organization dedicating serving special-needs children and their families and the caregiver. I'm bringing special-needs equipment into our parks, California. The work we do for our community is very critical keeping older adults and people with disabilities safe and healthy. We are inaccessors, and people like us, we help people that we don't know, and it's the right thing to do. In addition to providing essential social services, our programs bring great economic benefits to our county, excuse me. Raising IHS providers' wages to twenty dollars an hour by twenty twenty-seven will support the creation of three hundred and ninety new jobs in San Joaquin County, generating sixty-five million in the local economic output through IHS workers' spending, and bringing in five hundred and fifty-three million from the state and federal fund sources. Yet many IHS workers across San Joaquin are struggling to provide for our families and ourselves. Seventy-eight percent of IHS caregivers work multiple jobs to make ends meet. Forty-two percent of IHS caregivers experience food insecurity. Fifty-three percent IHS caregivers have difficult paying their mortgage or rent each month. Our community need IHS workers, and IH workers need your support. I urge you to continue collaborating with our bargaining team to reach an agreement on the union contract that we uplift everyone in San Joaquin County. When we fight, we win. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak before we move on? Take your time.
I'm back again. My name's Suzanne Bernstein. Good morning, gentlemen. I've been a recipient of in-home supportive services since July of last year. I got lost, sorry. I stayed in the hospital for, oh, okay, wait a minute. May of last year, they found a tumor in the back of my head. And I'm young. I shouldn't have had one. But I've had, I stayed in the hospital for two and a half months. And then when I finally got out, I received critical care I needed before I finally got the ability and to go back to my home. Before I becoming, oh, wait a minute, back to my home, and the only reason I got to was I had the support of IHSS worker, Rosalinda, for me. Before becoming my, oh, I can't read this, I'm sorry. Before she was my worker, she was a longtime friend. If it weren't for her, like I said the last time I was here, I'd be dead. Because once I got out of the hospital, I went to a deep depression, and depression was taking me bad. And then I've had a stroke since then. And if it wasn't for Rosalinda being there, I'd be dead, for sure. She's my IHSS worker, and she deserves a lot more. She goes up above and beyond what you, what normal people do for you. It seems like everybody I knew before disappeared. My IHSS worker takes me out of my home, takes me out doing things instead of me laying in bed, sulking, and getting more depressed. I just say that they should, they deserve more money than what they have. Because right now, they're not making nothing. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Anybody, anybody else wishing to speak? Okay. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to consent items, and it looks like one was on there. Number twenty was on there, but fourteen and fifteen has also been requested. So I will leave it to the Clerk of the Board if she could read the explanations of why those three are being pulled.
Thank you, Chairman. Consent item number fourteen is a request from General Services Department to approve the lease agreement for four hundred East Main Street, Suite seven zero one, for the term of September first, twenty twenty-five, through August thirtieth, twenty thirty. For the record, the term stated on the agenda and supporting documents of August thirtieth, twenty thirty-one was incorrect, and the correct term is through August thirtieth, twenty thirty. Same thing for consent item number fifteen, which is also a request to approve the lease agreement for four hundred East Main Street, Suite seven sixty, for a term of May first, twenty twenty-five, through April thirtieth, twenty thirty. Again, for the record, the term stated on the agenda and supporting documents of April thirtieth, twenty thirty-one was incorrect, and the correct term is through April thirtieth, twenty thirty. And then lastly, consent item number twenty is a request by the Office of Emergency Services to adopt a resolution to amend the department position allocations effective March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Again, for the record, the agenda and supporting documents stated an effective date of February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. The correct effective date is March tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, do we have to separate the vote later for amendments?
You would not need to separate the vote unless the board wishes to do so. But when the board does make a motion to approve the consent calendar, they should do so as amended.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we'll start with Supervisor Rickman. Do you have anything else that you would like pulled? Good. Supervisor Ding.
Seven, eleven, and twelve.
Seven, eleven, and twelve. Vice Chair Dolly Wall.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. And Supervisor Guardia. Number six, and that is the first one. Number six. Approve the use of twenty-three hundred dollars for supervisory district one funds for twenty twenty-five. Is that the right one? No. Yes, that is the right one. Number six. You have the floor, sir.
If we, before we start, Mr. Chairman. That'd be you.
Sir, yeah.
I think myself and Supervisor Guardia are talking about the same thing, six and seven. They're just two splits on district funds so we can address them both at the same time.
Okay, perfect. Who wants to go first? Supervisor Guardia, you. Rose Shambel, real quick.
Good morning, Supervisor Canapa, Board Chair, and Supervisor CAO and County Council, Kamal Bagri, your Agriculture Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. We are here in front of you today to thank you for all your support for our very, very important AgVenture program. AgVenture started nineteen years ago in Lodi and with one event. And now we are organizing four events per year. As you're aware, that agriculture is number-one industry in San Joaquin County, and it is very important for us to teach our new generation where their food comes from. I would like to also thank you continued support from Farm Bureau, California Carol Women's Association, California Women for Ag, University of Cooperative Extension, and many, many volunteers who come to these events to make these events successful. With me is Krista McCoon. She's been organizing these events for the last ten years, and I'm sure she has a lot more stories to share with you guys.
Thank you, Kamal. The event that we're referencing here is our Lodi AgVenture event, and it is, like Kamal said, one of four. So every year, we educate ten thousand third graders about where their food comes from and making healthy nutritional decisions as a result. And so we've, after the COVID pandemic, we actually complement those with virtual programming for anyone in the world. Any of you guys could watch them. You could watch them live, or you could watch our recordings. And so it's become a really well-rounded program. And so we take what students learn in the classroom. We take them out and let them see, taste, touch, feel, smell agriculture in a way they may not otherwise be able to. And so this Lodi event will serve over twenty-nine hundred students from Lodi, Linden, Oakview, New Hope, and Stockton Unified.
That's awesome. I mean, it's amazing. Steve Gutierrez was, I think, the supervisor that started this, and you do an amazing job. I didn't recognize you outside of your little.
Yes, I normally have my jeans on for my AgVenture events. Yes.
My apologies. So Supervisor Guardia.
I had the privilege to go out to the county fairgrounds, and the first thing I saw was all the kids out there. And it was great, just to have the opportunity to participate, our Stockton Unified Youth in Lodi. I'm very, very honored to participate and make sure that these kids have the same opportunity and benefit of what you guys do. So thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Supervisor Ding, you have the floor.
Yes, I wanted to say thank you. I mean, this is grassroots up. I mean, seriously. I still keep laughing about the Carlos booth. You know, about all the parts of the cow being utilized. Ninety-nine percent of all the parts of the cow. And she pulls out the little thing, a Jell-O. And the kid goes, but there's beef in there? Well, no, it's Jell-O ten. And he stared at her, and he goes, does this mean my mom's not a vegan? Sorry, I got a sick sense of humor. I just want to say thank you. And it's great to reward. And just one other comparison story. I was with a group of teachers from Sacramento County last week, and we were talking about this program. And they said, you guys do what with third graders? They had no idea, and it is unique to San Joaquin County. So thank you.
It is, and thank you for your support. This is free to all of the students that attend. And for a lot of them, this is the first field trip that they've taken by the time they get all the way to third grade. So thank you for the support. It's free to them, and we appreciate it.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you Supervisor Guardia and Supervisor Ding for bringing this forward. You know, AgVenture is awesome. And you look at what the state has done to agriculture in this state. And, you know, it's important to have our children go out there and see exactly what agriculture is. And when they get older, they have that memory in there and will support agriculture. And I appreciate your phone call, too, Kamal. I know you were talking about this, you know, in Lodi, but you mentioned, like, South County is by far the best AgVenture. So, you know, I appreciate it, but I don't want to be in a competition or anything.
She said that right after the wine event.
No, hey, thank you both. You did a good job. Good work.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Any further comments? Thank you for, sure. Supervisor, Vice Chair.
I would like to thank both my colleagues for supporting this. Agriculture is our backbone in this area. And so I recommend it's an honor to be part of the South County.
No, it's important, too, that we need to get those COVID kids out and learning some stuff and, you know, hands-on. And I think that's the most important part of it, is that kids go out from all different, you know, places and socioeconomic and, you know, how they were raised and see that. Because I think we need to do better of that. We have ships coming in to the port, and a lot of people haven't seen that. A lot of our kids have never been to the snow or to the ocean. And I think it's kind of a disgrace that we don't have that. So thank you for showing them what we do have and what makes our little, our saying, you know, greatness grows here, is obviously our theme. And I'm going to keep milking that one. So I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, number eleven Supervisor Ding is adopt a resolution amending department position allocation listing for Community Development Department and one development senior technician in the community development budget. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we're going to combine eleven and twelve. And is the department director here? Thank you.
Good morning.
Did all your technology down in the basement work?
Got it working. Thank you.
All right. I thought this would give you an opportunity, you know, between, you know, the new computer system that we adopted that didn't exactly go according to plan and some of the frustration that's been out there and the public not really understanding staff shortages or what's going on. And we were talking about a concierge, getting back to people, to give you a chance to highlight what we're doing to fix the problems and be more customer-friendly.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Ding. Good morning, everyone. So as most of you know, we started a new, we implemented a new software program in May of twenty-four. And it's, the name of it is called Asella. It was supposed to replace our twenty-five-plus-year outdated software program, which used to be called Permits Plus. It was very much needed. I'm really proud of the staff that put in over two years of work working with ISD as well as the vendor to put this program together. It's customized for San Joaquin County. Now, my understanding was that we were going to be more efficient. A lot of us thought that. But it's not necessarily making us more efficient right at the get-go. So that was the frustration, both for the public and for staff. So there are some kinks that have to be worked out. We've been working really diligently with our ISD department and a third-party vendor who has, since they brought that third-party vendor on to really focus on making the corrections that need to happen, I feel like we're definitely moving in the right direction. When I say we aren't more efficient, what I thought was, well, maybe we won't need even some of the vacant positions that we have right now. Maybe we won't need those anymore because essentially, we were going from everything paper to electronic. What we have actually found is that it provides, it does a few things that are really positive. It does give transparency to the process, to the public, so they know where their permits are. It does hold staff accountable for timelines, things like that. However, what we've also noticed is that in every kind of transition, it can be, it can be a little bumpy. So not only do we not have the vacancies, we're fully staffed up right now, but we need additional assistance, which is why we're asking for these positions now with the support of Supervisor Ding, some of the former board members that are no longer here. Sandy Regalos and her team and HR, they've all been really helpful in getting us kind of back to where I think we need to go, which is, we actually need more staff. We need to be able to help the public We need to be able to help the public on a case-by-case basis with not only uploading and understanding the new technology, but, you know, it's just, the coordination between, it's also Public Works, it's environmental health, and so we're trying really to educate the public and provide, you know, the explanation they deserve as to why things can take a little bit of time, but our goal is always to get faster. So, I do think that with these new positions, the business analyst position is actually going to help us create better processes, which is a brand-new position for CDD. We've never had that position before. The Development Services Senior Tech at the counter is going to be what Supervisor Ding refers to as the concierge, where we're going to have the ability to do more appointments and walk-ins, they can immediately get some assistance, kind of hand-holding, if you will. And then the third position is a Plan Check Engineer, which we have not increased the number of Plan Check Engineers in our department in all of the years that I have worked there, which is a lot. And so that individual will be able to take what we call low-hanging fruit, so some of the things that should not take a revision that is put in for a plan, or something really simple, will hopefully be able to be turned around very quickly. So, with these three positions, I do envision that we will really make a big difference in our, in how expeditiously we can get these permits out, because that's the number-one goal for the public and for the department. So, appreciate the support.
That's exciting, because usually, no one calls and says, "What a great job you're doing," because they're usually complaint-based driven. So, thank you for what you do, and thank you always for being responsive to all, at least for me, I mean, I can't speak for my fellow supervisors, but I know you guys are always there and your staff is always helping and get us the information that we need to help with a lot of the constituent items that we get on the daily. So, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
A couple of questions. Jennifer, thank you so much for listening to communities' needs and doing something about it. Are we doing all plan check in-house, or do we outsource some?
We do, through the chair, we do actually, Supervisor Dollywall, we do have the ability to utilize, we have consultants on, in our budget, basically. We, right now, have the ability to process internally, for the most part. If there's a really complicated project, we may send it out for our consultant, but for the most part, we can do everything internally, and we like to keep it internal when possible, but we always have that as a backup plan.
So, since we're going to be doing more plan check in-house, how much revenue do you think that will generate with the plan check fees?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
How much revenue do you think that will increase for the department, since we're going to be doing more in-house than outsourcing? So, there will be plan check fees coming in, right?
Right. So, the, we currently have somewhere around $100,000 to utilize for outside consultants, but we have not been utilizing them anywhere close to that capacity. I would say we, for this year so far, this fiscal year, I think we're somewhere around $40,000 or $50,000. But if we don't need to use them, then that revenue would stay within the department.
How many plan check engineers do you have without the addition of this one?
We have one senior plan check engineer, excuse me, and two other mid-level.
So, this will be number four, right?
This will be the fourth, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. So, let me see if I can get this straight. We get a new system in order to run more efficiently, I assume, right? And we get the new system, it's not more efficient, as a result of this new system, we have to hire more bodies? Is that what you're telling me?
I think that's the, through the chair, sorry Supervisor Rickman, I think that's the short-term answer right this minute, but I do envision in the long run, we definitely will be more efficient. It's just a matter of you're training the public, you're training your staff, and sometimes the system's not doing what it's supposed to, so then you're working with consultants to try to fix that. So, we're still in that transition process, but ultimately, I hope that this will make us much more efficient.
So, how long has the system, you guys been using the system?
We've been using it since May of '24.
And so, it's almost...
And I will say, it has made a lot of, we have made a lot of improvements.
You know, efficiency is always important. I mean, this is why we, you know, spent, if I recall correctly, tens of millions of dollars on these new systems in order to become more efficient, so it's kind of frustrating, you could say, that here we are, in order to try to be more efficient and save money, now we're spending more money to get more bodies in order to get updated to the system that we spent telling, you know, you can see the government, I guess, right? Timeframes. How is our timeframe looking now with permits? I mean, are we getting them out on time? Is it worse off before we have the system, or is it better now that we have the system in place, or it will be better once we get the new bodies in place?
I'm going to work backwards on that question. It will be better when we get the new bodies in place. I think, actually, one piece of information that is important to note is that when we had the recession in '08, there was a significant amount of layoffs in my department, because we're, we are driven by the economy. That was a long time ago, I acknowledge that, but the department did not really begin to staff up again until the last few years, when you had some other, some change in management. So, we're not even at levels we were 15, 20 years ago. So, that's one of the reasons you're seeing that we're needing to get some of these additional positions. We're always mindful of our budget and not wanting to ask for too many positions without justification as to why we need them, so this has been a learning experience since we went live in May. Like I said, I incorrectly thought we could be getting by with the people that we had in the office at the time, and then maybe even not need some of the office-level vacancies that we had at the time, but we have since decided that we want to really have a high level of customer service, so we staffed all of those positions, and then we identified additional positions that we think will also be helpful. Back in the day, there was a position at the counter called a counter manager. That position went away when we did some add and deletes and rearranging of staffing in the department a couple of years ago. So, basically, the Development Services Senior is going to fulfill that role again, which is very helpful for the public, because it's someone dedicated to the counter for counter questions, and then also will have the responsibility of monitoring every day building permit turnaround. The business analyst will identify where the holes are in our efficiencies. That's the goal.
I mean, I don't have an issue with the bodies, per se, because I think this board, and we've told staff or the director, or our department heads that, hey, if you need bodies, or if there's a kink in the system, let us know. So, and that's how we take care of the body. Just, my frustration is just that we spent tens of millions of dollars on a system that isn't efficient as, you know, we were told it's going to be. And economic development, Supervisor Dollywall just mentioned it, is, I mean, your department plays a huge impact. One of the biggest impacts of economic development is getting these permits out in a timely manner, quick, fast, time is money, right? We have, we are one of the fastest-growing, and I'm preaching to the choir, but we are one of the fastest-growing counties in the state, and, you know, we're having businesses looking at San Joaquin constantly, and one of our strong suits or strong points is our economic, or is our planning process or permit process. You come in here, you get a business, you know, you apply for a permit, we plan-check it, boom, you're out and you start building. We have to make sure we have that system in place. So, no, I just, it's just, again, I'll just reiterate, you know, we get a new system in place, it seems like we should have stayed with the old system, and it would have been more efficient, but...
I understand what you're saying. I do.
So, again, thank you for the work you and your team do. I know you guys are very, very busy. You're one of the departments that I talked to. Actually, I got to give you a phone call here today or tomorrow about something. So, keep up the good work. We know you have a lot of stuff on your plate.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gardeya.
Have we tracked our efficiency in the past, and do we currently track how fast we're getting permits out?
We have an obligation to get them out within a certain amount of time within the building code, and yes, we do meet that obligation, but we would like to get quicker than that. So, that was one of the problems with the old software, is it didn't have that ability to track that kind of information, whereas the new program, we will be able to track that information. In addition, like I said, we've never had a business analyst in our department, and one of the, the function of a business analyst is to look at business processes and see where we can make more efficient decisions and where we would, you know, to, it'll help us when, in the long run, to determine what staffing, if we need additional staffing, or where we can get additional software. I fully understand where the board and the public are coming from in the frustration. Trust me, it has been our frustration as well, to have to work on a program for two years, and then when we went live with it, we had a lot of things that just made us look not real great. But I will say, we've made a lot of progress in the last, how many months is that, eight or nine months? And ISD has been really supportive in getting us the resources that we need, and we have those allocated through August. I'm really hopeful by August that we will be in really good shape. I'm hopeful we'll be in good shape way before that, honestly. But, you know, I know that my staff are working around the clock, they're trying their hardest. We really do value customer service, good customer service, we've always tried, but if the technology's not working, we just have to find the holes and try to address them and fix them permanently.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you mind yielding to County Administrator Regala for a minute? She has a comment.
I would love nothing more than to...
You don't need to yield.
County Administrator Regala.
Okay, through the chair. I just wanted to, before, I mean, we can continue to discuss it, but I do appreciate and I understand the frustration of the board and the departments. I will say, I don't believe, you correct me if I'm wrong, Director Jolly, but I believe the system was no longer going to be supported, so this is why we had to get a new system. It has been some growing pains, it really has, and I agree, I understand your frustration. You work a couple of years to try and implement it, and once it goes live, you would hope there are no kinks, but there have been, and they are working hard to work through those, and I agree, I think since May, they have made some major improvements, and I believe in the long run, it will become more efficient and a lot easier. Right now, as Director Jolly has already said, she didn't have, when we met earlier with Supervisor Ding and Director Jolly, we started to look, and her staff, to look at the positions that she had, and she really didn't have what she needed, even if she had an efficient system, and so that's what we're trying to correct today.
Thank you.
And that is correct, through the chair, that is correct. The system was not supported anymore, hadn't been supported for a very long time, probably should have been replaced a long time ago, but we were told we were one bad day away from losing all of our information in that old system, and so that would have been really catastrophic for the county. So, I'm grateful that we at least got to a point where we could transition over to this new system, and I don't think this helps anyone feel any better, but I do meet with a lot of different community development directors and planning directors, and anyone who has gone through this has had this experience, because that's just the nature of technology. When you make a big change to, like, we basically took out everything old we had and put in this brand-new system, it's, it, there are, it's always got some growing pains that need to be worked out.
Perfect. Supervisor Ding, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I have to say...
Supervisor Rickman's happy.
Director, I appreciate the fact that you didn't say this all started when I wasn't here, but that's the truth. And so, we've identified what the problems are. The problem is, somebody moves a door four inches over, and they put in a revision, and it's taking too long. Why is it taking too long? There's two points here. One is, in the world of technology, when, you know, you get a call from a carrier and they say, "Just switch your phone service over to us, it'll be easy," it never is. We've got these technicians that sold us a computer system that said, "This is going to make your life easy." Well, yeah, they all went to MIT. They know how to use the damn thing. We're dealing with plumbers and pipe fitters and architects, they want to build a house, they don't want to learn how to use a computer. This is a great lesson for everything we're going to deal with, is, at the end of the day, you know, it's like walking into a restaurant, and they, "Can I have a menu?", and they hand you this damn thing with a QR code on it. I don't want it, I don't want to sit in the restaurant and use my phone, you know, give me a menu. It's not my forte. What we forgot here in this process is, we're force-feeding customers how to do business with us, is what we were doing with the computer. We wanted everybody to become computer-savvy. What Jennifer has done here is recognize what the problems are and putting, I call it my Eric Merlot fix. All the old guys always say, "Back in the day, when Eric Merlot was sitting at the desk, this would have been handled in a day." Well, rather than telling them, "No," let's find a way to the word "yes," and that's what she's done. And we've hired a concierge, I'm sorry, whatever your business, tech, whatever, to be able to humanize the experience and help us get through this process, and then when the, you know, the world is trained on how to use computers one of these days, hopefully, I'll be dead by then, then we can move on. But I want to congratulate you in recognizing what the problem is and not fighting it, not swimming upstream, but saying, "We got to fix this from the human element, we got to make it more customer-friendly," and you've done that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll end with that you said you had money in your budget, $100,000, whatever, and just to reiterate, permits have, we have to be timely on these permits. I know you are most of the time, but if this system is putting a kink in it, if you have to go outside or whatever to get the permits moving, so we don't have a backup, so we can get businesses up and running, then so be it. And if you need more funding or whatever it may be for, with that, or have an issue with that, you need to come back to the board and let us know, because I can tell you, one of the calls that I get the most of is about permits. Say, "Can you help me with this permit? It's been this long, this long, and I haven't had a response, so we have to get these things moving." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. I think everyone's done. I mean, it's important, obviously, you know, to get people that are waiting for permits, businesses and buildings and homes, and you get that, we all get that, so how do we do it? How do we present it better? So, thank you.
Yeah. I think number 12 also got pulled, so should I stay, or?
No, I...
He put them together.
I just put them together. We just wanted to talk to you.
Okay, well, thank you, and again, I do appreciate the support of the board, as well as the CAO's office and HR, because we were able to do this pretty quickly and not with the normal order of things, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, so we need a motion. Oh, 26, I'm sorry. They can't read my ready on there. 26. Supervisor Dollywall.
Good morning.
Genevieve, since July 2023, 279 million provided in services, and we only recouped 88. Had then these positions been in place at that time, how much more do you think we would have recouped?
Through the chair, so, good morning, Chair, Supervisors, County Counsel, Madam CEO, Genevieve Valentine, Behavioral Health Director. That is actually a really good question. So, payment reform changed the way that behavioral health services actually gets payment back for services. Our department went from 30 billing codes to over 10,000 billing codes overnight. What our department ended up doing was assessing our current staffing infrastructure and went out and got a contract with the EHR team that built the new electronic health record that behavioral health had and is using at $850,000 in order for us to actually know how to bill services through this new model, when the state changed Medi-Cal. Since that time, we have realized that medical coders is something our department didn't have and needs to have, due to the fact that we now have 10,000 billing codes similar to the hospital, so there's different codes that need to be in play. With these billing coders, our hope is that all $279 million that we have actually provided in services, we will actually be able to be reimbursed for. In our service delivery, we have up to a year to actually work through what we call our denials, so we can submit bills, and then we have one year after receiving those denials to still retain those funds. So, what we're hoping is with these new medical coders, we will actually have a much better chance of even getting some of that $279 million that has been yet paid to us, however we provide those services. In addition to that, this upcoming fiscal year, behavioral health will be required to start having contracts with commercial providers for various crisis services, which means our billing coders and our staff are going to have to learn a whole new set of billing codes, because Medi-Cal codes are not always the same as Blue Cross, Kaiser, and so forth. So, being able to have these coders in place will not only allow us to get the funds that we rightfully... will not only allow us to get the funds that we rightfully deserve, because we've provided the services, but also to be proactive when in the fiscal year we're going to be required to have contracts with private insurance companies.
When do you think these employees will join us?
Well, through the chair. The process of actually getting the positions was the first step, if approved. Our HR department is working diligently with us, so they understand the need of these positions. So as soon as they are approved, we would get position numbers. We will be able to recruit, if I am realistic, 90 days post-approval.
So did you, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say that we can go back a year?
That is correct.
To recoup?
Yes.
So that gives us one year, or it gives us two years in case there's a denial?
Very good question, so through the chair. It is one year from the date that we submitted the bill. So if the bills were July 1, '23, we can only work our denials until July 1, '24. So we are only allowed one year to work, we call it working, that report back to us in order to recover from those benefits.
The report says that, you know, with these positions, we can start recouping 4.5 million, more than we've been. So most likely, these positions are going to pay for themselves.
They will more than pay for themselves, absolutely.
So my question is, are these, adding these positions, is that enough? Or do we need to add more? Because, you know, this is, we are losing a lot of money.
We are not capturing all of the money, because we're going to get that money. We're going to figure out how to work it.
Thank you.
So I think starting with the three is going to allow our department to actually fix the infrastructure that we have not historically had in terms of billing. Historically, we've had accountant techs, accountants, and office assistant specialists do our billing. This will be the first time that we actually have traditional medical coders within the department. Once we have them fully embedded in the team and we can kind of work through our processes, we'll then determine if there are additional needs or if what we are creating is working. There will be additional requests at fiscal budget on expanding our billing team. But we wanted coders as quickly as possible in order to not have the ticking time bomb that is happening right now continue.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And if you need extra help, please let us know. I know, I will support it, because, you know, this is taxpayers' money.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Guardia?
So it sounds like 90 days, possibly, best-case scenario?
Through the chair, best-case scenario would be 90 days.
Are other counties, is there any type of outsourcing that other counties are utilizing to capture that funding?
So through the chair, a lot of counties went with the contractor who built our EHR to assist with the billing mechanisms. The difference between our county and a lot of other counties is there is actually embedded information support through the electronic health records. And many of them already had medical coders in preparation of the change to this system. We did not make that change as quickly as we probably could have. We are in that process now, and we will recover from it.
Any other further questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
So, sorry, but those were good questions, by the way. At this time, we will call for motions for consent items number 1 through 37, with corrections on 14, 15, and 20.
Some move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Clerk of the Board, can we call for the vote? Motion passes 5 to 0. So at this point, we're going to a public hearing, which I need to open for a minute. Right, County Council?
Correct. With respect to the first public hearing, which is, public hearings related to adoption of an ordinance demanding Division 2, the board, the department is speaking with one of the stakeholders. And in order to have time to complete those discussions, is requesting that this matter be continued until April 8.
Okay, so I will open the hearing. I could have a recommendation to postpone this until April 8?
Recommendation to postpone?
Okay, if we could have a vote on postponement? Do we need to vote on postponement?
Is there a second?
Oh, we have a first.
Second.
Oh. Ding or...
Ding.
I mean, Rick, Ding is first, and Guardia or Rickman, take your pick for the second.
Your choice, Chairman. Who'd you see first?
Okay, there you have it. We'll call for a vote then for postponement to the 8th.
It doesn't matter.
If y'all could vote. Postponement till the 8th passes 5-0. Okay. We're going to go to, at noon for closed session, correct? So we're good with the next items?
That's correct. There's somebody who won't be available until noon. And so, the, to the extent possible, we'd like to delay closed session till noon.
Okay. So moving on to discussion. So the, obviously, this is from my office. And then Supervisor Guardia had equal concerns about smoke shops. So we're going to have board discussion and directing staff to bring an urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on smoke shops and to study and consider amendments to the county ordinance, Code Title VII Business Regulations and Title IX Development Title, to effectively regulate smoke shop businesses within the unincorporated area of the county. So one of the reasons why I brought this forward is we have a lot of, especially in my district, there's a lot of overlap between city and county. So there's not much in the language about how we would even address that or what these smoke shops are selling and how they're selling it and possible, the ability to make licenses that smoke shops need to go forward with before they can sell it or on an annual basis. So there's some checks and balances that we can do. So that's the reason why we brought this forward. So at this time, we will go forward. And Supervisor Guardia, some of your concerns in your area?
100%, in public comment, it was brought up on Country Club. There's three smoke shops within a one-mile area, which is very concerning to me. Honestly, I feel, I feel like we dropped the ball on that to allow that to happen. But I'm excited to work with the county on moving forward to make sure that we put safeguards in place that protects our communities from overabundance of smoke shops.
Perfect. We had a kind of a preliminary meeting with County Council and some folks to figure out, you know, best steps and best practices moving forward. So County Council Kieran, did you want to speak to that about how our next steps, if we did want to look into something like this so that we can clean up our language? The City of Stockton has some language, and we met with them also to see. I mean, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but I think we need to be better neighbors going forward. So we have Supervisor Rickman wanting to speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Just real quick, I know I brought this back in October of last year, and I'm glad you're going to talk to council, because we had an ad hoc committee. I can't remember who the ad hoc committee, and you were going to look at some land use decision in regards to injunctions and so on. So I just wanted, I guess we're going to find out with the ad hoc committee and what you guys found out. I know you worked with our sheriff department and so on, so that'd be interesting to hear.
Yeah, so that's the question. I mean, so in the area, obviously, the District Attorney's Office and the sheriff's office has somewhat jurisdiction over it. Community development, some of the language is very vague. I mean, so I think those were some of the things that came up in conversations of how, going forward. I mean, I've seen it over where I grew up. I mean, there's one, you know, in the City of Stockton on Harding Way. And man, it's a hot mess. And I mean, it just, it just, it creates havoc in an area. And I mean, you know, how do you manage it? How do you, you know, revoke their business license or permit if they're not, if they're not good operators? It's kind of the question that I wanted to find out and how we can go about putting some, you know, teeth in the ordinance so that people that aren't complying with the law are selling to minors and doing things, you know, that they don't have the ability to stay in business in that location was kind of the concerns that I had, so.
Sure. I think the recommendation we've come up with is that we, that the board directs staff, including my office, CDD, sheriff's office, DA, administration, whoever, whoever might be helpful in carrying this out, that we come back with a moratorium. We actually have an urgency ordinance ready to go, which we could bring back to the next board meeting, which would place a moratorium on any new smoke shops opening. This, as I'm sure you're aware, we're only able to regulate unincorporated San Joaquin County. But we could bring that moratorium, or urgency ordinance effectuating a moratorium at the next board meeting. Jennifer Jolly is here, and I think we've spoken as to how best to implement that. And then that buys us time, and then we can go back with some concrete, well-thought-out amendments to Title VII, which regulates businesses, and Title IX, which regulates land use of our county code, so as to address some of the concerns I've heard, which include there being an over-concentration of some of these smoke shops together. I think there's been some sentiment that we want to, we want to have, we want to spread them out. And then also that if they operate in a manner which is illegal and are selling things that are illegal, and there have been allegations that affect, and I think those allegations have been substantiated by law enforcement, that we'd be able to take action against them so as to shut them down. And so, we, first step, direct us to do a moratorium. We'll bring that back, assuming the board adopts that urgency ordinance. Then we'll come back in the not-too-distant future with some concrete amendments proposed to Title VII and Title IX so as to address some of the concerns that we've all heard.
Perfect, thank you. So Supervisor Guardia, do you want to yield the floor? Or you're good? So Supervisor Rickman? You're good?
Yeah, I'm good for now. I'll wait till after public comment.
Supervisor Ding?
Yeah, I just want to know, you know, obviously, I drive by, and I think they're all in the city. How many shops are we talking about that are in unincorporated San Joaquin County?
Hello, Jennifer Jolly, Community Development Director. Through the chair, Supervisor Ding, it's a little bit challenging right now to know how many are in the unincorporated county, because smoke shops are considered retail sales and services establishments. So when a person comes in and says, "I'm going to open my retail business. I'm going to sell some things." The county, I mean, at least CDD, does not regulate what they're selling within it. There are other agencies, you know, even at the state level, such as liquor sales, things like that. So we regulate the land use. We say where you can put retail sales and services establishments. But we do not necessarily identify smoke shops independently, which is one of the ideas that's been kind of thrown around, that maybe we should be doing things like that, you know, to identify them. A lot of places in this county do sell tobacco products that are not necessarily quote-unquote what you'd think of for smoke shops. We have liquor stores, we have mini-marts, we have, you know, places like that that actually sell them as well. So it would be a little bit hard to give you an exact number.
That was part of the problem. You have all this tobacco stuff and a banana in your grocery store. So I think the language need to be clarified. And I think that's what we touched on in part of the meeting that we'd had originally, so.
Just through the chair, I would, when this was first, I've seen an estimate that there are at least eight smoke shops in the county, in the unincorporated area of the county, although... And I've, somebody indicated that it's over 20, although I've not been able to confirm whether they're talking about just unincorporated San Joaquin County. In terms of addressing the issue of smoke shops versus every place that sells tobacco, I mean, you think about it, grocery stores sell it, gas stations sell it, 7-Eleven sell it. Evidently, the problem seems to be emanating primarily from actual smoke shops. And so we're going to try to, so as to not be overly heavily-handed in terms of regulating, we're going to try to carve out the regulations and the moratorium to address just smoke shops as opposed to, let's say, gas stations.
Good morning, Nick Tariel with the Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant in the Special Services Division, through the chair. With our community car program, through the community engagement, we've identified eight. We've also heard the rumor of upwards of 20. We've found Google Maps that say upwards of 11, but typically, we're not finding those. Eight is what we've identified.
Perfect. And questions or concerns or a little backstory on what our meeting was about and what you saw as possible hurdles?
Yeah, through the chair. The issue on our end is, we know that smoke shops historically will bring nuisance and blight issues in the community. We have some high-profile cases that generated, originated from a smoke shop investigation that was a clicket. Typically, what we find is nefarious activity operating within the business, which is not, until there's a law violation, there's no law enforcement need or presence required to be there. So on our end, we would expect an entity like, one of the governing bodies like CDTFA or code enforcement to go in and make sure that things are being done in accordance with ordinances in San Joaquin County, which is not necessarily sheriff's office function. And that just doesn't seem to be happening. Code enforcement and sheriff's office typically work very well together when we, when we get on the same page. But as we discussed in that meeting, that it doesn't, we don't go make checks annually for business license or permitting regulations.
Perfect. So a few gaps that we can tighten up, at least with going forward. I think it's important, public health. Question, comments, there's plenty of seats. Miss Sinsari? Question, comment?
Yes, hi, good morning. Supervisor Canaba, Chair, Board of Supervisors, County Council, and CAO. I'm Renee Sinsari, Public Health Director. I do believe we have those numbers that we could share. I have Daniel Kim here, he's our Health Promotions Coordinator, and he oversees the Smoking and Tobacco Outreach and Prevention Program.
Good morning, through the chair. One of the things that the retail locations have, or most retail locations are supposed to have, is a state retail license. So there is data that we are able to track through the California Tobacco Assessment Tool. And so, what, the number that we were able to pull up, that there are actually 134 tobacco retailers, but that's really a minimum, because I think there's been experience that there are some retailers that have opened up without getting the state license. And it sounds like, at least with the experience through Stockton, they did identify some retailers who didn't get that state license. And now that they have a local license, they're also working on that. And so, that's one of the numbers. However, the concern, I guess, that we have as a program is, you know, looking at smoke shops, because it's hard to define. And, you know, once you define it, they may be able to find a way to get around it. And so we're looking at it from a perspective of all tobacco retailers in order to be equitable in terms of how we set up standards and do enforcement.
Perfect, because that's the question. I mean, how many feet setback do you have? And what's an oversaturation? I mean, you know, ABC does it for, you know, alcohol, you know? Who does it for tobacco? And I mean, that's the thing, is how much square footage do you allow? And what do they do, and how do they do it? You know, I think is a good conversation. And I mean, look at the different departments that we're just including now. And thank you, guys, for coming forward, obviously, seeing this. I appreciate that. But I think it's us, getting all of us together, and what is the best practice and how we're going to go about fixing it. So I think probably the moratorium thing is probably the best thing going forward. Any other questions or comments? I mean, I think that that would be helpful, and then we can figure out best plans of attack so that we can address it. The thing for me is just the overlap between our cities. And I get it, because my whole district is, you know, between city and county, and we have the pockets all over. So I've got a bunch of people on this list, and I haven't cleared everybody. So Steve Ding, obviously, is out. So Supervisor Dollywall?
Jennifer, I have a question. Are there any applications for more as we speak?
Through the chair, I had my staff run a report this morning, and we were, so, a little bit of education really quickly. So business licenses are processed through my department, because in San Joaquin County, in the unincorporated area, we use business licenses to regulate land use, meaning we will not issue you a business license if you do not have the correct permitting zoning, et cetera, for where you want to go. et cetera, for where you want to go. However, after that gets issued, the renewal process is strictly through the treasure tax collector. So CDD doesn't necessarily see them year after year after year, so that's just one piece of information. So when someone applies for a business license, you do need to get a new business license if it's a change in ownership. So some of these facilities are existing and then they'll sell them to another operator and they'll need to get a business license. So that's also why business licenses aren't necessarily the easiest thing to use for tracking of where they're located, because if you had a business that turned over three times in one year, that's not three separate businesses, that's one. So to answer your question, we looked at how many business licenses we had pending for operations that do sell tobacco, and we only identified three right now, and that's because there's only a 15-day processing period for business licenses. So we just went back, you know, for the pending ones, because otherwise they've been issued. We do have, as an example, we do have a gas station and mini-mart that's going to the Planning Commission in a few weeks, and based on our experience, they typically do sell some sort of tobacco product, but they're not considered, I don't think anyone would consider that a smoke shop. So often, smoke shops are going into retail establishments, strip malls that are already there, and typically don't need a separate land use permit right now as the codes are written, but that's something to be discussed and, and considered moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Guardia.
Also at that meeting, I, I believe that we kind of identified there could be other issues with land use permits. It's okay.
It's an exercise.
Land use permits, you know, I, I think it'd behoove ourselves to know what type of businesses are going to be going in places that, you know, we're not going to want a, a adult store next to a school, as an example. So I, I think there's definitely room for us to improve that process, and I appreciate your, your team's work with that. And I think a moratorium is definitely the right decision moving forward, buys us time to identify and not reinvent the wheel because I, I believe other cities and counties are doing a good job of, of dealing with this issue. So I, I think the moratorium is, is definitely the first step.
Perfect. Supervisor Rickman?
Thank you, Chairman. I know when we brought this back in October, we were discussing, when my office brought it back, with discussion of state emergency regulation to ban THC-containing hemp products, and that's where we're getting into this whole smoke shop thing. So, and people are watching, you know, you know, you know, why are we even, you know, why are we talking about this today? And it's to protect and safeguard, you know, our youth here in San Joaquin County against illegal or harmful products. Now, what the emergency regu- or the regulation from the Governor's Office or Department of Public Health, the reason they had that emergency was to strengthen California's ability to stop the peddling of intoxicating hemp products to California children. The new regulation required that industrial hemp food, beverage and dietary products intended for human consumption have no detectable THC or other intoxicating ca- cab, cannabis, oh my God, cannabinoids per serving created minimum age, blah, blah, blah. So we're talking about going beyond that into smoke shops in general.
Yeah.
And when we discussed it, when we had the ad hoc committee under our council's office talk about land use, how hard would it be to define what that would be, put in a, a definition for land use and deny it? You know, so we have a moratorium and I guess we haven't, in an effort to get that definition, but then we have that, define it and just ban it. I mean, how hard would that be?
You're asking me?
Yeah, you are the.
So, well, just through the chair, so some of the, some of the things that have been discussed, we do have ord- separate ordinances for. So for example, adult entertainment has an entire ordinance within Title IX for CDD to enforce, and that does regulate, it's very specific. I believe it was written by County Council many, many years ago, and it's, it really, to, to address Supervisor Guardia's concern, you know, we'll take care of that so you don't put them next to a school or, or something like that. I mean, something similar could be done for smoke shops if you wanted to still permit them in the county. Liquor sales are something that with the updated code that we just adopted in, in December of '22, we have tightened our regulations on, on the permitting for liquor sales as well, because we, we saw that as a, as a concern for some of these communities as well, where the liquor sales, there was a, a concentration of liquor sales within us near residential commu-, you know, neighborhoods, and, and so, so it's definitely something that CDD can help with and we can figure, you know, whatever the board, whatever direction the board would like to go into as far as regulating it, we're, we're there to assist with it. There are certain things that CDD does regulate, which is land use. It's a little bit trickier for the sale of the products in the store, that's not typically something that CDD does. I know we did meet with the City of Stockton Police Department. The difference there is that their code enforcement is in the police department, so that, that's just a nuance that's important to note because my, my staff are not trained or, we do, like Lieutenant Tariel said, we, we do work very closely with the Sheriff's Office, so when we're creating this ordinance, we just want to be really clear on who has authority to do what. And, and where would the, if you allow it with a land use permit, is it the land use permit that would get revoked? Is it the business license that would need to get revoked? Because those have different rules as well as who can do that and for what reasons. So I think that we definitely can all work collaboratively to get this, to get this done. I just don't think we have the exact plan today. So the moratorium would be really appreciated so we could work this out.
Yeah, if we brought this back in October and it's, you know, almost March, I mean, it seems like we're not too far where we were in October, and why is that? Does anybody have a question for that? I mean, we brought it back because, you know, the state of California identified that this was a widespread problem, and we brought it in October and it seems like we're still discussing it now. Didn't we have an ad hoc committee and, and all this stuff? And so how lo- how much longer is this going to take? And my, and secondly, is that, you know, we're talking about tobacco is one thing, and then, you know, THC with hemp products is a, another. And I think there's two different dangers, I guess you could say, you know, if you're selling hemp products and it's supposed to be hemp and nothing else, and you're having to, you know, detecting THC in it or cannibaloids or whatever it may be, I think that's a separate one. So if we're having an ordinance and if you're not sure on the tobacco, we should be able to ban one or the other, right? Hemp, selling, a business selling hemp-related products, correct? So, well, that's my question. So look at hemp, look at tobacco, and, you know, moratorium, I, I agree 100%, can we ban them outright? If we can't, then I know we can do ordinances that you can't put them so far away from schools and, and so on. Me personally, now, I'd like the sheriff, Lieutenant was talking about, smoke shops, I mean, they're, they're an issue. I mean, they're a, a public nuisance issue, and do we have, and that's another one, do we have to wait until they become a public nuisance before we do anything? And so these are a lot of questions that need to be answered. I just don't understand why they haven't been answered more completely before, you know, since we did bring it back in October.
Who, I, I, sorry, but I can't remember who was on that, because I mean Supervisor Patty was bringing it forward.
Yeah, I don't remember.
He, he was talking about Stanislaus County and they did enforcement, and I didn't even think about public health. I apologize for include, not including you guys, but how do we go forward in doing that? Because even some of the applications, do you put on their tobacco sales or what other forms of sales that they have was the question that we had, and what percentage? And then I think that was a question that the, the city had, how much percentage of your floor space? And I think those are the things that we need to figure out and how to do it and what are the criteria? Because I don't think right now we have the, the way to revoke that in those areas now. And I think that was probably the most alarming thing, that if somebody's breaking the law and selling to minors, what do we have to do to stop them from doing it in the future? And I think that was kind of the biggest part, but I, I mean, I do remember the hemp part of it, but I think we're talking tobacco, so all in all, I mean, if we need to bring back that committee, if you want to be on it, or who to, I mean, I, I would be more than happy to.
Man, do we, I mean, we don't want to have.
I don't want to reinvent the wheel, exactly like you're saying.
Right, by committees. I mean, hey, at, at the end of the day, Chair, is our intended person or reason we're here to protect and safeguard our kids here in San Joaquin County against, you know, harmful products. So, I mean, do we, Council, do we, do we have, well, Chair, I don't want to step on your toes, but do we need an ad hoc committee? Can you guys just, you, you heard the board, just run with it and bring us something back?
No, I, you know, me, I don't care who does it. I mean, I don't care who gets the credit, but this needs to be cleaned up, so that's why I brought it back and those smoke shops, I mean, the cannabis part of it, so.
Yeah, so through, through the chair, so what, what we have contemplated right now is a moratorium, saying you cannot open smoke shops. And we'll define smo- and my intent is, is defines, we have it already ready to go. We would define smoke shops so that we're not putting a moratorium on every tobacco retailer, which would include grocery stores, if somebody wanted to open a grocery store or a gas station, for instance. Rather, we, I've tried to narrow the definition of smoke shop so it basically captures what we think of colloquially as, as smoke shops.
As their primary business.
Yes. Then we, we can come back in short order with proposed amendments to the business license, which is Title VII, and, and Title IX, which deals with land use. And so that would, as I said earlier, that would deal with requiring spacing between smoke shops. It might require it be a certain distance from a school, things of that sort. In terms of enforcement, if a smoke shop is selling stuff illegally, as has been reported, that's where you'd have a yanking of a li- of a, a smoke shop license, a business license. There's a question of who should enforce that. If, if, I, I know CDD has some concerns, hey, we don't normally enforce that kind of thing. I hear the Sheriff's, I hear the Sheriff's Office suggesting maybe they don't normally enforce it. If, if we were to do it similarly to how we do massage parlors, both departments have enforcement powers, but that's something which needs to be worked out as to who would take the lead on that type of thing, because it's, it doesn't fit perfectly in, in, in either department's normal responsibilities, but we'd have to work that out. But we can do this in short order. But completely separate from that is, is what Supervisor Rickman is suggesting, which is outright outlawing hemp products or THC products, if I'm understanding that correctly. I'm happy to meet with Supervisor Rickman and get clarification as to what he would like to propose, or if, if you'd like to have an ad hoc committee, we can do that as well. But it sounds like Supervisor Rickman, you're the one, you, you've got something specific in mind and I can simply meet with you, and we can, we can incorporate that into a proposal, which the board can consider whether it wishes to pass.
Perfect. At, at this time, you yield the floor. Do we open it for public comment or is that, okay? Okay. At this time, I'll open it if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak to this issue. It's all county staff in here or what? Okay, so back to the board, so, recommendation?
As, I'll move per County Council's recommendation.
We have a first and a second to have a moratorium and more to come in the future with all of the partners in figuring out how CDD and everything will go forward.
Yeah, my, my understanding of the motion would be a direction to staff to bring back a moratorium banning smoke shops, and thereafter to bring back an ordinance which would amend Title VII and IX as necessary so as to regulate and, and control the location of, of smoke shops. And in addition to that, that I meet with Supervisor Rickman to get clarification as to an additional potential proposal to outlaw some products altogether.
Perfect.
Couldn't say it better myself.
All right, have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. All right, motion passes five to zero. Thank you for everybody coming and participating in that conversation. Moving on. The Registrar of Voters approved the proportional share billing methodology for election services provided by the Registrar of Voters to cities and districts. Ms. Hale, you have the floor.
Good morning, Chairman Canaba, members of the board. I'm Olivia Hale, San Joaquin County Registrar of Voters. With me today is Professor Mitchell Brown. She is a professor at Auburn University and Director of the Institute for Election Administration, Research and Practice. She also serves on the Bar of Directors for the National Association of Election Officials, which is the Election Center. We are here today to present to you the election billing methodology analysis that was recently conducted by Election Center for San Joaquin County. Later in the presentation, we will also hear from Dennis Manzo, our Elections Manager, who will speak about the cost comparison and fiscal considerations. We will also be available for questions after our presentation. On March 26, 2024, the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors gave direction to review the current billing methodology. A request for pers- proposal was sent out by the ROV with the assistance of the San Joaquin County Purchasing Department. Election Center was selected to conduct the analysis. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Professor Brown at this time.
Thank you very much for having me here. Again, my name is Mitchell Brown, and I will walk through these materials with you. The team that we put together, you see here on the slide, includes Kathy Darling Allen, the former clerk and registrar for Shasta County, Sue Ranachak, former assessor recorder, clerk and registrar from Mendocino County. They were both also very involved over a 10-year period in reviewing and understanding billing across the state of California. We also worked with Zach Moore, who's a public finance professor at the University of Kansas, and Assistant from the Election Center, Lauren Hill. The purpose of our project, well, first, let me tell you about the report. You have the report in front of you, I won't go through all of it with you, just highlight some particular parts. The purpose of our project was to evaluate the billing methodology used by the Registrar of Voters' Office, to look at it and compare it to the applicable laws from the state of California and best practices in the field, and to provide recommendations. I, this is in a, a mystery novel, so I'll, I'll start with our big conclusion, which is the billing methodology overall complies with federal and state law and is substantially in line with best practices, though we did have a couple of recommendations for some minor changes to make. To draw these conclusions, we looked at 15 months of billing and spreadsheets and documentation. We interviewed fiscal and management staff in the county. We conducted site visits here, reviewed the state law, compared with national practices to formulate our conclusions. There is a section in the report that I will not go through about current law and court cases around billing in California, though I do want to highlight this one particular instance in the state code that says that each district involved in a district election for the affected county, they, they shall reimburse for the county actual costs incurred by the county, and that the affected county shall determine the amount due for each district. When we went through the different approaches to billing across the state of California, one of the things that we note in the report is that there are three major ways that counties do billing in the state. The first of these is a generic proportional share. I won't go through the methodology in all of these. Currently, the county is using a version of one of these. The second then looks at what we call a retrospective fee schedule, so it looks at two years of past billing and expenses in that way. And the third provides what we refer to as a jurisdictional cost study, which calculates a weighted share depending on the number of candidates on the ballot. What the county is currently doing, and you see up on the screen, is looking at direct costs that can be assigned to particular jurisdictions, identifying the number of contests on the ballot and the percentage of those shared costs between the county and the jurisdictions on the ballot, and remaining, allocating remaining costs across the jurisdiction based off of the registered voters. What we are proposing is a version of what's going on with the proportional cost share, where the county will review what they're actually billing for as a direct cost and increase some of the items that are included in those direct costs, then generate what is referred to in the report as a cost per voting opportunity figure. This is essentially one share for each jurisdiction on the ballot, including the federal, state and county contests that are on the ballot that the county already pays for, and then bill for each jurisdiction by taking that cost for voting opportunity share for the districts by the number of registered voters. We make a number of other recommendations in the report, so the, the first I just went through was just go to this generic proportional share method. Additionally, we also believe that there are other things that the county should be billing for, that they are not currently billing for, that should be included in that. We recommend that the county exclude overhead billing for municipalities as per California Government Code 51350, that the county bill all of the boards of, Boards of Education for their elections. for their elections in accordance with state law, that they update their billing areas to reflect those costs. We also recommend that the county work on developing a communications plan to clearly communicate all of this to the other jurisdictions, enhance their internal documentations for the future, and institute a review of non-contractual expenses for cost-saving measures for the county. Olivia.
Alrighty, so, department recommendations. Upon approval, the department will implement the proportional share method for billing, update documentation and our fee schedule, regularly review any election-related costs, the impact the county would improve deficiencies will maximize fair and equitable billing, compliance with industry standards and government code, and improve our cost management. And at this time, I will bring up Dennis, if you want to come on up.
Thank you, Olivia. Good morning, Chair Canepa. Chair Canepa. Excuse me, members of the board, county administrator. If we could do the next slide, please. So, we're just going to go over the, some of the fiscal considerations of the recommended change. Now, there's, there's basically four different types of ele, of elections, and each of the different types of elections may carry different fiscal, fiscal impact for this change. The gubernatorial primary being the least of those, and likely the greatest of those would be the presidential general. So, we're going to use the estimated cost for the November 24 presidential general for matters, for the, for this discussion. So, just a couple of important factors to point out. The, the November 24 general election had 63 total contests on the card, 21 of which were the county's responsibility, and 42 of which were for participating cities and districts. It's important to note that of the 21 contests that are the county's responsibility, really only three of those were for county contests. The others were for federal and state contests. I believe five federal and 13 state. So, utilizing the legacy methodology, the current estimate, and these are still estimates, this is a work in progress, we won't have the final numbers for another month or two, but we're looking at current, total election cost estimate of roughly around 5.5 million, of which 2.7 would be the county's share, and including candidate statement costs, roughly 2.7 would be billable to the candidate cities and districts. Now, based on the proposed A1 methodology that the Election Center is proposing, the billable revenue would go down. One thing I want to point out, the net election cost, you will see that as an increase. That increase doesn't represent actual increase in costs. What we've learned through this process, working with the Election Center, is we have the opportunity to include some additional components in the election billing that were previously considered operational, that we can now include in the election billing, in the election billing process. So, that increase of 496, again, it's, it's only a shift of cost from operational to election. Yes?
Good question, Supervisor Dollywall.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does the state pay its portion for the election cost?
It does not.
How about the federal?
Pardon me?
How about the federal government?
They do not.
Are, are there, in the recommendations, I didn't see any?
Are definitely efforts towards that pursuit. They're not part of this particular discussion. I believe there are other items that Olivia will be discussing.
So, through the chair, great question, Supervisor Dollywall. We're actually working with our state association, the CACO, California election officials, clerks and election officials, and we are looking to request more reimbursement from the state. In the state of Colorado, they actually reimburse their counties up to 45% of the election costs. We've worked collaboratively with the, the office of, the Legislative Analyst Office for the state, and they've been down to visit our office two different times, and they are actually working on a study to explain to the state why they need to support counties in a better way. So, on a bigger scale, it is being looked at. There's nothing individually we can do right now, but I did work with our legislative platform to ensure that Ms. Crowley is involved in making sure that we're tracking anything out there that may be something that, that the board would want to support. So, we are looking at all avenues on ways that we may be able to accomplish that in the future.
When do you think we might get an update?
I, from what I understand, LAO is doing their study and putting together a report. We're looking maybe towards the end of the year, I think, is what they said.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, so that, that change in costs is, is not an increase in actual costs. I just wanted to point that out. So, the, as you see, the, the currently projected impact would be a reduction of 630,000 in the revenue. Now, we're continuing to work on that. We do believe that we can bring that down some, maybe closer to 500,000, but we're just not quite there yet. We'll have a little more clarity on that in, in another month or two. Would you mind going to the next slide? Thank you. So, for fiscal considerations, due to the projected operational savings of approximately 320,000 in the ROV operations, and the receipt of unbudgeted revenue totaling 669,000, no negative impact to the ROV's allocated net county cost is anticipated for fiscal year 24, 25. So, we're very fortunate in that regard. Election revenue for future elections will likely be reduced as a result of this action, again, varying depending on the type of election. The ROV will strive to continue to identify efficiencies in all of its areas of operations to minimize the net fiscal impact to both the county and the participating cities and districts that are entrusting us with conducting their elections. And those pursuits include the pursuit of additional revenue resources primarily from the state.
All right, and we are available to answer any questions for either myself, Mr. Manzo, or Dr. Brown.
So, I mean, part, part of this before I hand off to Supervisor Rickman, I always call this the Stockton East Clause, right? I mean, it was part of the problem of how we were billing those folks and the types of elections that they have and how they run them, right? I mean, what's also started this conversation, so, that, the recommendation includes that, right? That it's to improve our billing methods for those folks. And then, the County Office of Education was something that you kind of threw in there. Is that, did that get corrected?
Absolutely. All of those things have been corrected, and we're in progress to correction, if that makes sense.
But then, does that include a little bump in what they will be paying for that? So, then that money that we're projecting to be less, right, would shrink that, right? As, and also the savings that you're looking at, right?
Yeah, the, the, the change in the new methodology will definitely have some level of positive impact to the billing for Stockton East. However, it doesn't dress, address the larger issue with Stockton East, which is the fact that each of their ballot items go to their, in the entire water district. And that's something that's not really within our control. That is more in the control of the water district.
For, for clarification there, Chair. So, there's three ways that an election can be done. It can be done at large, by district, or from district. Stockton East Water is very unique in the essence that they do a from-district model, and as a board, they have the authority to change that if they so choose. So, what that means is, in most recent elections that Stockton East Water actually went to ballot, Divisions Five and Division Seven are what go to ballot, but Division Five and Division Seven voters aren't the only ones that get to vote on Division Five and Division Seven. So, Stockton East Water is actually 180,000 registered voters, and so when Division Five and Seven go to ballot, Division Five and Seven go to all 180,000 voters. And so that is why their cost is substantially higher than some of the other districts, is because of the per-voter clause.
Good, perfect. Supervisor Rickman?
Thank you, Chairman. First thing, first, you said you went to Auburn, Auburn University?
Yes, sir.
Roll tide.
True.
I had to give you a bad time. I know this isn't, Supervisor Dollywall brought it up, and we discussed this already, and this is for our county council or legislative person here, Hillary, is that unfunded liabilities. So, and the state's mandating, well, different mandates that we have to adhere to for the county, but we're not getting reimbursed, correct? So, it may not be reflected in the cost that we're looking at today, but there is a substantial cost to this county in order to, you know, buy, buy what the state of California does, right?
Absolutely.
All right. And for our county council, I know this is a big issue, not just for San Joaquin County, but, you know, all the counties in the state, unfunded liability, states have these mandates, and the counties and our taxpayers have to, you know, pay for it, and we're not getting reimbursed. So, you know, I'm glad you're taking care of it on your end, but we need to look to, you know, for our end, work with our, our other counties, and to see what we can do, you know, in litigation, or whatever it may be, in order to reimburse our costs. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that. So, thank you very much for your guys, it's outstanding. I know we met before. We've got to put a lot of work in this, you know, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Through the chair, if you'd like, Supervisor Rickman, I did prepare some notes about stuff related to elections on unfunded mandates. I don't know if the board would like to hear those things or not, but I did have a small list that I can just send to you and forward to you particularly prefer.
That's fine by me, but I'll leave it up to the chair.
Oh, that's fine, yeah. I mean, more information, I mean, that's the whole gist of this, right, is to be, well, number one is stronger together, so if we do have a problem that we need to, you know, collaborate and go after the state and the federal government for not helping us fund our stuff, and that we're having to pay, I don't want it to be a general fund hit, because then, you know, things that we need to do, and if the economy changes, then we need to be mindful of that. So, I'm, I'm for that, so I don't mind. Are you smiling because you like to speak?
Oh, please, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ding?
I think this, Supervisor Rickman has been beating this drum every single two weeks about unfunded federal mandates, and I, he's 100% correct, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to send, I think we should do this every two weeks on every issue that comes up that's an unfunded federal mandate. And I think we, we ought to draft a letter to our state representatives on this issue, and ask them to submit legislation to reimburse us for this and to support us on eliminating these state unfunded federal mandates.
I agree. Through, through the chair.
Olivia, I'd be interested in seeing this, this list you're speaking of. As far as the unfunded mandate issue goes, and I, I think I mentioned this the last time, it is a new emphasis from the County Council Association that we need to fight back against the unfunded mandates from the state. I'm not aware if, I, the feds may be able to impose unfunded state, it's not supposed to. That being said, there's not been a lot of aggress, there's not been a, an aggressive pursuit of, of those funds recently, partly because there's a whole administrative process which takes years to, to go through, and, and, you know, justice is delayed, justice delayed is justice denied. So, you know, because they put this onerous, cumbersome process in place in order to get reimbursement, there hasn't been, it hasn't been pursued as aggressively as maybe we would like. Like I said, though, there has been an emphasis upon the need for us to do that, because it, it has gotten a little out of control, maybe a lot out of control. And when we've come up, when we see something which is a solid example of an unfunded mandate, and you got, and the devil is always is in the details, whether or not, you know, this is elections, I'd, I'd have to look at the particulars. But if there's something solid, we've been encouraged to reach out to the County Council Association and coordinate a potential action against the state. And I'll take a look at what Olivia's making reference to, and see if that is a viable option. Another thing I should note, though, is generally speaking, you have to take action within a certain period of time of the unfunded mandate going into effect. So, we, we can point to things which are arguably unfunded mandates, but if they've been in effect for years, the window may have closed on our opportunity to take action. But I'll take a look at what she's making reference to and see if it's something that's potentially viable.
Okay, because this part's not agendized, so how do we do that?
Oh, no, nothing.
We're doing a billing presentation.
I'm not, I'm not getting.
No, but I'm just saying, what, how do we go forward with this comments? I mean, the recommendation.
Can I, I mean, this isn't an old issue. 1995, Congress passed their no unfunded federal mandates law, and it just kind of, you know, that was a great idea, and then it went away. Can we specifically, since it has to be done within a certain timeframe, and this is the issue that's been agendized, draft a letter to our elected officials, asking them to support the constituents of San Joaquin County on this issue?
I think you can make a motion to agendize bringing back a letter to that effect, because it's related to the issue that's before you.
Would you like to do that, Mr. Supervisor?
But, thank you, Supervisor Ding, but since it is, isn't this, looking at legislative priorities, if it isn't our legislative priorities, it shouldn't have to come back to our board. Our chair should be able to go ahead and do that. But if it's not in our legislative priorities or, or strategies, then I guess I'll bring it back. And I don't need a motion, I'll just put it on agendize item and bring it back.
Sure, and I, I don't have memorized where our legislative priorities are. I'd have to see if it mentions unfunded mandates. If it does, then yes, I would agree with you. The chair could just sign it.
And through the chair, I've been working with Ms. Crowley, and I know that you actually asked her to follow that particularly, and then I brought it up after our meeting. And I would definitely like to work with council, because there are some very specific items where there's been other counties, at least related to elections, where they have requests, put in a test claim, and they've been denied. So, this, the requirement, when an unfunded mandate comes forward, we have to submit a test claim, and so once a county has submitted a test claim and it goes through that process, it takes quite some time, and so there's, I actually will share with, with council that, you know, San Diego County was denied a claim when it came to conditional voter registration. There's a pending claim from Los Angeles County about ballot labels. There was an absentee ballot claim that was approved back in 2004, but now we don't call it absentee, and then there was a suspension of state-funded mandates. And after that, now we have, call it vote by mail, and there has not been a test claim submitted regarding vote by mail, and so that's something that I would absolutely like to work towards, because we're looking, and it's anywhere from 800,000 to almost a million dollars that we're paying to distribute a vote by mail ballot to every single voter, and the state is requiring us to do that through universal vote by mail, and we're paying for it instead of the state.
Okay, so, we, I think, Hillary, I mean, obviously, this is a, I think we have direction where we don't need to bring that back, so, I mean, just to figure out with county council how it's going to be going forward. Did you have something to say since you walked in?
Oh, no, just through the chair, Hillary Crowley, Legislative Coordinator for San Joaquin County, members of the board, Madam Chair. This is written every way since Tuesday, no unfunded mandates, like, I'm working on them while I'm listening diligently to the meeting right now. It is written many ways, in many topics, covering every, every department in our county is impacted by this, and it's very, it's thoroughly covered in the current state and federal platforms.
Okay, so it doesn't need to come back, then it's in our purview, so we have it as one of our goals, so we don't have to have Supervisor Ding bring it back, I mean, Rickman bring it back.
We can do it right now, it's already in our platform.
Okay, all right, perfect. Then, that gives us permission to do a letter and send it to the state, so. Back to the original billing one, do we have any more questions or concerns about the billing methods that we're looking at? No, the original one. We got worked up over the letter, and now we forgot about our original form of business here. All right, I'm going to open it up. Any public comment? You have 30 seconds, no, just kidding. You have three minutes.
30 seconds. One, two, three. Molly Watkins. Okay, so, that's all great and everything, but don't forget, the whole idea is to cut the cost, not move the cheese. So, getting somebody else to pay for it still means it came out of my pocket, the taxpayer. So, we got to get rid of these mailed ballots, you got to show up in person, vote on the day, she counts them, we're done. Midnight, we're done, we go home, we're done. And get rid of the ballot boxes. Again, vote in person on election day, we're done. There's no signature verification, you see the human body in front of you with an ID, you check the box, and they give them a ballot. Germany counted, what, 37 million in six hours? We have 37 million in the whole state, we ought to be able to count 280,000 in two hours. No problem, all good. All right? Cut costs. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping. All right, so, any other, Carla, would you like to come up and speak?
Do you want me to reiterate when I said?
No, no, you're perfect, I think. Thank you, though, for your guys' staying, staying and being part of the process, right, instead of being part of the problem. So, I like that. Anyway, any other recommendations, concerns, questions?
Well, do we have a motion then, since it's already in the platform? We don't need to bring it back.
It'd all be different recommendations on this one. That would just work out.
So, I'll move for a motion, but is it, motion as per recommendation, as per recommended? I mean, there's like, or to accept?
Well, I see, yeah, the, the board letter indicates the recommendation, it is recommended the board of, it is recommended. board of, it is recommended the Board of Supervisors by board order approve the proportional share billing methodology for election services provided to the cities and districts by the register of voters. That's what was put in the board letter.
I'll make a motion per your statement.
You have a second?
Question.
Oh, question.
I'm going to ask for a point of order, too. Go ahead.
Through the chair. I, I'm simply reading what is on the first page of the board, board letter, which says recommendation. It is recommended the Board of Supervisors by board order approves the proportional share billing methodology for election services provided to the cities and districts by the register of voters.
Never mind. I just answered my own question. Thank you.
Who have a first? Have a second? Anybody? Did you, did you second?
I'll second.
All right. First and second, call for the vote.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Are we going to finish up with the last so we don't have to come back? Or do we in the 12 o'clock wait? Or how long is this next presentation? Huh? Come on up. Since you've been sitting patiently all morning. And I don't want your billable hours going up on us. So that's why we're going to take it now. You have the floor.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gdann Velato, the Public Defender. And I'm here today with Jeff Sabian from Behavioral Health Services. And we are here to present the Felony Incompetent to Stand Trial Mental Health Diversion Program update. On July 12, 2022, the Board of Supervisors retroactively approved the agreement with the Department of State Hospitals for the implementation and administration of the pretrial felony mental health diversion program extended through May 31, 2025. We now have an agreement before us to extend and expand that program significantly. What is the DSH diversion program? It is a collaboration between the Department of State Hospitals and the county governments to develop or expand diversion programs for individuals who have been, have a serious mental illness and who face felony charges and have been determined to be incompetent to stand trial. The DSH diversion program provides funding to counties to provide them with housing, community-based mental health treatment, and other wraparound services. Why is this program needed? People who are incompetent to stand trial have oftentimes committed felonies which stem from serious mental illness or from homelessness. They have difficulty accessing the mental health services and committing to treatment, and they often cycle through the criminal justice system. The goal of the DSH diversion program is to provide these individuals, when a judge thinks that it is safe and appropriate, with long-term community mental health treatment and other wraparound services in an attempt to avoid criminal charges and institutionalization. Diverting those who can be safely treated in the community will reduce the long waitlist for admission to the state hospital and will preserve the limited beds for individuals who require more intensive inpatient treatment and supervision. Additionally, the Department of State Hospitals has established a growth cap for each county to protect against incentivizing felony IST commitments. If a county's total number of annual felony IST determinations exceeds the county baseline, the county does get subjected to a penalty payment. San Joaquin County's fiscal year 2021, 2022 baseline is currently 92 patients. Participants who are ordered into the DSH pretrial diversion program must be facing a current felony charge and have been found incompetent to stand trial. They must be diagnosed with a qualified mental illness, including but not limited to schizophrenia, schizoaffective disorder, or bipolar one disorder. They must have a significant relationship between the serious mental illness that they have, conditions of homelessness, and the charged offense. And they must not pose an unreasonable risk of public safety if treated in the community. And Penal Code Section 1001.36 lists out the specific crimes which specifically excludes individuals from participating in any diversion program. So what services do we currently provide for our clients? Currently, we provide housing, psychiatric services, medication management, one-on-one counseling, group therapy sessions, substance abuse treatment, life skills training, socialization, transportation to court and their treatment services, and assistance signing up for services and resources. Quick update on how our program is progressing. Our program was authorized to serve 26 individuals during a three-year period. We had 31 individuals enrolled in order to participate in the pilot program. 10 have successfully completed the program. We have 10 who are currently in the program, two of which are about to graduate. We have another three that we are working on transitioning into a lower level of care with the goal of graduating in the next three months. Of those who did not complete the program, two were able to be given on alternative treatment and eight were returned to custody. Of our 10 felony IST graduates, all were connected to behavioral health services after graduation. Eight of them are still currently voluntarily receiving treatment through behavioral health, and two have been closed out. One just because of relocation out of state and one through lack of engagement. So as I indicated earlier, this program is going to be substantially expanded in the coming years. Our initial program was from July 1, 2022, through May 31 of this year. It included 26 clients for the entire project period, and the grant fund was for approximately 3.7 million. The new program would go from July 1, 2024, and would go through June 30 of 2029. It would authorize us to serve up to 62 clients per year, and the grant funding would be approximately $49.7 million. Because of the extreme expansion of these services, the Public Defender's Office has collaborated with Behavioral Health Services. And I'm going to let Mr. Sabian speak on their participation in this program.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name's Jeff Sabian. I'm the Deputy Director with Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. We, we are looking forward to partnering with the Public Defender's Office on this project and want to briefly go over how BHS is planning to collaborate with the Public Defender's Office on this project. Currently, we have an RFP out. We plan on contracting with an intensive clinical treatment provider to provide housing and a full continuum of behavioral health services for this population. We plan to assist the Public Defender's Office with contract monitoring of the clinical services when that RFP has been awarded to ensure that these clients are receiving the services that are required. We have hired a court liaison to be in court and to provide the court with risk assessments, screenings, and eligibility determinations. We plan on assisting the Public Defender's Office and finding appropriate supportive housing for these folks. We also will help facilitate the transition of care 90 days prior to the graduation to ensure they continue in behavioral health services as we've been doing in our pilot program. And we want to ensure that all clients are continuing to receive behavioral health services as they exit.
We thank you for taking the time to listen to our brief presentation. And at this time, we would recommend that the board retroactively approve the agreement with the Department of State Hospitals to receive funding in the amount of $49,659,000 for the implementation and administration of the felony mental health diversion program by the Public Defender's Office for the period of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2029. Additionally, we would recommend that they authorize the Public Defender to electronically sign and date the agreement and to sign a deposit all checks received from the State of California Department of State Hospitals for the pretrial felony mental health diversion program. And we are open to any questions the board might have.
It's, it's crazy because as I've done this job, it used to be hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's millions of dollars. Because as we're seeing Supervisor Guardia just asked for an update on where the homelessness money is going and being spent. And people always ask that in the community. And I mean, I think the, the one year was $60 million, you know, and people asking, what are you doing with the money? So, I mean, this is a grant of $50 million. That is a lot of money. And I mean, when we're talking about just the sheer not huge volume of numbers that is mandated, this is another one of those mandates. And so it just absolutely blows me away that we need to be good stewards of taxpayers' money because we're always talking about that. How do we get the most bang for our buck? And then I'll stop in my rant and go to our fellow supervisors. But those are the things that just be, we're getting this money. We need to make sure that the folks get the services that are intended. Because when we do do those contracts, and it's hard to make sure that those folks that we are giving this money are accountable, but we need to hold them accountable. And we need to make sure that these programs work because this is a lot of money. And I've been trying to do it. If we can keep people out of emergency rooms and, you know, behavioral health, get them to their meetings and things like that. And I think these programs help in that. But anyway, I will go to speakers and Vice Chair Dollywall.
Question, sir. Under fiscal impact, it says that there are three positions. One is part-time?
We have, we currently fund one full-time position and two part-time positions. The full-time position is a clinical social worker that is housed in the Public Defender's Office. And we have a part-time attorney who is dedicated just to this program, as well as a part-time accounting technician, too, who is working on our billing and making sure that we are accountable to Department of State Hospitals for all monies used and received.
So out of 49-plus million, how much do you think we will need to fund these positions through June 30, 2029?
The way that the budget is allocated by the Department of State Hospitals, it allows for up to $1 million per year to be used for justice partners to fund their, to fund any kind of positions that they need. The additional $228 per day per bed is to be going to the wraparound services for each individual in the program. So we, we would not be able to exceed the $1 million per year for any positions. So, and then that would not include the court liaison, which will be another $300,000, which is allocated in the budget each year for behavioral health services.
Thank you. Thank you very much for both of you and the whole team being here. Appreciate it. I'll just curious, in your office, the Public Defender's Office, how many folks come through with serious mental health, like we're talking about here, as we know the different types of crimes?
It is hard to say, but I would, a vast majority of our clientele have some sort of mental illness, whether they be deemed to the level of being incompetent to stand trial or not is a different story. But the vast majority have some sort of mental illness. This is something that, it really has changed the lives of the graduates in our program. I do, I, we met with one individual who, she started out, she's never really had a stable home. She is currently in community college right now, working on a degree. She is doing fabulous. She's in housing with behavioral health. We have another individual as well, who just got his first job and his first car that he's ever owned. And the success stories are amazing. And so we were hoping that this is going to continue with, and the fact that they're giving us the opportunity to reach out to a lot more clientele than we used to be able to is, it's a dream come true. And we really hope that they continue to have the success that we've had so far. I know that other counties, such as San Diego County, has had some success with it. I think it was one of the big ones.
Stanislaus.
Stanislaus as well has had a lot of success.
All right. Thank you. Well, hopefully it continues to grow and get these people, you know, these folks help that they, they need. So thank you and your team for the, you know, work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Supervisor Guardia?
How does the, the state calculate the allocated spots for San Joaquin County?
It is based upon the number of IST commitments. So each county, they look at how many people are sent to the state hospital each year, and that is where they got their numbers from, once they determined what the actual budget was for the entire program.
And we currently, was it 10 or 20, the number? Do we, what, what do we have in for San Joaquin residents in that program?
For the pilot program?
For the state?
Oh, for the whole state.
For, at the state hospital or the state?
Do you happen to know that?
Yeah, I, I don't know. We, we are, our baseline is 92 clients a year that are found incompetent to stand, stand trial. And we well exceed that number now. We're at, we average about 45 clients a quarter. So we're about double that number. So we are at risk of sanctions. And one of the things these diversion programs helps, is helps offset those numbers so that San Joaquin County does not receive the sanctions or as many sanctions from the Department of State Hospital. And these are all folks that would be paying for a hospital bed for them to be in for a year, 18 months, if we didn't have a diversion program. And we know that a stay at Department of State Hospital is, is quite pricey.
Good morning, Genevieve Valentine, Behavioral Health Director. So to also elaborate, through the chair, to elaborate on our baseline numbers, it was from 20, 2020, 2021 is when they created the baseline, which was during COVID, when we did not have all of our courts open. So as Director, Deputy Director Sabian mentioned, our baseline is significantly lower than what we are actually producing quarterly. We petitioned the State of California to reevaluate our baseline to make it more in alignment of real commitments of IST, and we were denied that appeal. And in fact, they lowered our baseline by two or three. So we are trying to be as diligent as possible in order to not have sanctions while continuing looking at, at our baseline quarterly data. For transparency, it just doesn't make sense at the size of our county and how ill our county is. Our, our baseline should be significantly higher.
Perfect. Thank you. Any public comment? I mean, who, who turns away $45 million, right? We need new hearts, new heads today and everything, right? So I don't know. Anyway, do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second? A motion by Supervisor Rickman, second by Supervisor Guardia. Call for the vote? Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, we will go to closed session, and then we will come back for supervisor comments and reportable action in closed session, if any. So at this time, we're going to recess to
Supervisor, the Dollar Wall. You had a, you said you had a song for us while we wait? No?
All right, at this time, we're gonna come back in closed session. Do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Uh, we do not.
We do not. All right, at this time, we're gonna have HR do the service awards presentation, so come on forward and thank you everybody for showing up.
Good afternoon, Chair Canepa, members of the board. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Oriana Mahoney, who will do the service award presentation. Thank you.
Like it's different. Good morning Supervisor Canepa, supervisors. Really excited to be here today. As you can see, we have a very full house today, so we're really excited about today's presentation. San Joaquin County Human Resources is proud to be a part of the county's service award program. This award program strives to recognize employees at milestone periods of ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and up to forty years of service to our community. Employees with over twenty years of service are honored by the board of supervisors in this award ceremony. We will honor our employees, calling up each group of awardees by their years of service, where they will take a photo with our San Joaquin County supervisors. When you hear your name, you will walk to the front and await all members, members within your service years timeframe. The service award honorees are provided two longstanding gifts: a service pin identifying the years of service, and a framed photo. For those of you who received your service pin, if you want to put it on today for your photo, you can do that as well. Hopefully, this symbol is something our employees are proud to have in display. The framed prints are reproductions of nineteenth and twentieth century originals from the archives of the San Joaquin County Historical Society and Museum. The employee has a choice of forty-five historical figures, architecture, agricultural, and nature scenes to choose from. The prints include a brass plate identifying the employee's name and years of service. One hundred and forty-seven employees from nineteen different departments were eligible to participate in today's award ceremony. Fifty-seven employees requested to be honored publicly today. These service awards cover staff who have became eligible for the months of May 2024 to December 2024. Retirees are also recognized as part of the service awards program. Seventy-eight retirees from fourteen departments have retired from May 2024 to December 2024. Two retirees have requested to be honored publicly today. They have also received a certificate that you can showcase when you go up there for your individual photos with the supervisors. Awardees for the retirement recognition will be called up individually by years of service and in alphabetical order to take individual photos with our San Joaquin County supervisors. Human Resources is proud to recognize employees for their years of service and dedication to our community. We thank the board of supervisors for providing this opportunity to express meaningful recognition to our employees who have made public service their career choice. We will now honor our retirees first, and then move into the service awards. Please hold all applause when we get to the service awards portion of the event until all names have been called for that service period. So I'm gonna ask that the supervisors come down for photos. Bring your smiling lovely faces on down here. All right, we will go ahead and start with our retirees. I would like to call up Eric Shingu, who has served ten years and currently in mental, well, retired from mental health. Yes, you can clap for this one. Yeah, you could say, I would hold it up there if I were you. Show them your hard work. You can open that certificate up and show them your years of service. There you go. All right, thank you. Next up for our retirees with twenty-eight years of service, we have Joan Baker Warren. All right, thank you so much. We will now move into the service awards portion. Just a couple of quick reminders. Please hold all applause until everybody is up there. I will let you know when we have our last person, so you guys can start clapping. Uh, and when you hear your name, you're gonna come up and stand by the supervisors. We're gonna go in alphabetical order for those who have provided service to this community for twenty years. We're gonna start with Charlotte Duplikin. Next up, we have Jerry Ann Rocco with San Joaquin General Hospital. We have Julian Brian Gonzalez with the Sheriff's Office. We have Marcella Brown with Public Health Services. Melissa Fogg with the District Attorney's Office. Patricia Yolanda Sandoval- Patricia Yolanda Sandoval with Human Services Agency. Priscilla Peach with Probation. Robert Michael Turn with Community Development Department. Kevin Mausi with Public Works. And Letania Man Logan with Human Services Agency. Now you can clap, sorry, last one, yes, you can clap, clap away. It was, I only called the people that checked in. Was there anybody else from twenty years that was not called? Okay. Come on. What was your name? Stephanie McDonald, woo-hoo! Last but not least, unforgotten. Thank you all for your dedicated years of service, not a small deal, twenty years. All right, thank you everybody, go ahead and have a seat. All right, we are now gonna call those who have provided twenty-five years of service to our community. Let's go ahead and start with Beth Dane from the District Attorney's Office. Brian Wells from the Sheriff's Office. Carol Tafoya from Human Services Agency. Charles Ruiz from Parks and Rec. Craig Perucci from Human Services Agency. Chrissy O'Yancy from San Joaquin General Hospital. Dale Ludwig from Aging. David Nieves from Human Services Agency. Eliasar Galván from San Joaquin General Hospital. Francelia Barajas from Human Services Agency. Gloria Lopez from Employment and Economic Development Department. Jennifer Raylene Macias from Human Services Agency. Julian Ruiz from Probation. Michael Watson from Probation. Monica Carmela Panyagua from Public Health Services. Richard Lot from Human Services Agency. Safala Lay from Human Services Agency. Veronica Espinoza from Probation. And Edelisa Roberts from Behavioral Health, you may now clap. And let's try and get you guys to squeeze in a little bit. We need you guys to squeeze in, if you guys could squeeze in a little bit, squeeze in, squeeze in. I know, we gotta make fast friends, guys. Oh, maybe the person in the back next to the gray shirt needs to come up front a little bit. Yeah, come up front, yeah, 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 yeah. There you go, Katie, thank you, yes, there you go, awesome. Smile big, guys, you're on camera. Oh, one more, one more. All right, thank you everybody, thank you for your years of service. All right, we will now move on to thirty years of service. We will start with Dayan Jimenez from Human Services Agency. Kathleen Mederos from San Joaquin General Hospital. Kathy Hannah from Behavioral Health Services. Michelle Sanders from Behavioral Health Services. Kwan Nguyen from Behavioral Health Services. And Todd Turner from the District Attorney's Office. That's all of our thirty years of service. Great job, thank you everybody, thank you for your service. Next up, we will have our thirty-five years of dedicated public service. We will start with Bonnie Adams from the Sheriff's Office. Deena Munoz from Public Health Services. Donna de la Cruz Refuerzo from San Joaquin General Hospital. Lisa Guillen from Behavioral Health Services. Maria Montalvo from Public Works. Suzette Longoria from San Joaquin General Hospital. And Erin Moreno from Human Services Agency. And that concludes our thirty-five years of service. All right, thank you everybody, let's give them another round. All right, and our last, but certainly not least, with forty years of service, we have Laura Maria Nunez with the Agricultural Commissioner's Office. You're the next contestant on Soon to Be Retired, come on down. Forty years of dedicated service, folks. Forty years, guys, we can give an extra thirty-five seconds, right? All right, thank you so much. That concludes all of the names of our service awards recognition, so at this time, I will pass it back to the wonderful supervisors above us.
I just wanna say what an honor it is to be amongst all of you folks, that's pretty amazing, I mean, I worked for my family's business for thirty-two years and I didn't kill anybody, so that's a testament to your guys' survivability, but honestly, the county, I always say greatness grows here, and it's because of folks like you that make a difference and make our jobs so much easier, so that we have such a fine organization that I call San Joaquin County, so thank you for your years of service, thank you for coming today and being part of it. It means a lot to me that, that people love their jobs that much, forty years is absolutely amazing, but anybody over twenty years is an absolute testament that San Joaquin County is a great place to work, so we will open it up for Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you Chairman, yes, and thank you all for being here and congratulations to you all. You know, as policymakers up here, you know, we are up here, we make decisions and funding and so on, but you know, the job doesn't get done until you folks do your job, the boots on the ground are what makes an organization. You know, we do go to a lot of meetings and talk to several different county supervisors and counties, you know, we have fifty-eight counties in the state, so we get to see how other counties are run. And I can tell you, you know, in all truth, that this county and our workers are by far, I shouldn't say better, well, yes, I said superior, than what, what we see out there, and you can see it in the, the product that we have, or services that we give to our residents. And I think it's different, I mean, being in the two oh nine, you know, we do have a lot of pride, we have pride in our work, we have pride in our residents, we have pride in our home, and that shows by the work that you do. So thank you all for everything that you do for San Joaquin County as a whole and this organization, you know, we're very, very proud of you, and you know, just to let you know, we're, this board, I mean, me and myself personally, and I think I can speak on behalf of the whole board, you know, we're here for you, our primary goal is to make sure that you guys are taken care of, so thanks again, and God bless you and God bless your family.
Supervisor Dean.
Thank you, I wanna thank you for being of service, but I wanna also congratulate you, congratulate you on doing something that should make every single person so proud and happy every day, and that's being in service to other people, and we live a very blessed life, so thank you and congratulations.
Supervisor Guardia.
Congratulations on this milestone, it, it's great to see a large crowd here and being recognized as people, I, I see a lot of smiles out there, and it's something to be said, I came from the city of Stockton, and, and I feel like one thing that, that's has impressed me is the county workers are very proud, humble, and excited to be working for San Joaquin County, and it's really, really, for me, it's, it's enlightening that you work hard, you provide services to our community, and thank you for all you do.
Vice Chair Dolly Wall.
Thank you sir, thank you and congratulations, you've been here a lot longer than I've been, twenty, twenty, thirty, forty years, this is my second month. And, but one thing I know, that this county will not function without you, employees are the backbone of any organization, thank you, best wishes to the one who are retiring, and thanks to who are with us, thank you for all you have done and continue to do, may God bless you and may God bless your loved ones, thank you.
So with that, HR Director, would you have some final words?
I'd like to thank the board for this recognition, as you mentioned, it is a special event for our employees to be able to come and be publicly recognized for the hard work that they're doing every day, and we'd also like to invite everyone, there are some refreshments outside in the lobby, the HR team has been working hard on trying to kind of make some changes to this program, and I appreciate their hard work, and invite everybody to come and celebrate our workforce with some treats out in the lobby.
County Administrator Regallo, last but not least.
I feel privileged, thank you, I'm just so proud, I, I agree, Chair, you said it earlier, greatness grows here, and I can see it out here, makes me very proud and just excited to be part of it.
Thank you, okay.
And Chairman, can you let them know that I baked all the cookies last night, just let you know?
Yeah, right. On that note, we will, we will break for, for some refreshments, so thank you all for your years of service.